All right. Perfect. Thank you. So this meeting for the April work session is called to order. I am Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and it is my pleasure to welcome you to this work session meeting. At this time, we will have roll call. Vice Mayor Yasu.
I'm present.
Councilman Carol.
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins. We'll give her a second. Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
And Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
All right. If there are no other changes to the agenda, we will proceed with the the agenda as presented. Item three, work session. Resident comment policy. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the city council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. So if you notice, we'll move on to item four, and we do have a robust presentation for this work session, and I'm so excited about this. And I'll turn this portion right over to Ms. Cowie, our interim city manager. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we do have a robust presentation for you all tonight. Thank you all for to our presenter. And our first comes from the Clarkston Community, um, the Georgia State University Department of Community Engagement, the Prevention Research Center related to Clarkston Community COVID Needs Assessment Research. Um, prior discussions were made with Clarkston leadership to identify community needs and understand the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and what it has had on the Clarkston community. So along with this research, there was a request to allocate ARPA funds in the amount of $30,000 to assist with this assessment for translation services. And the city of Clarkston is so graceful, uh, and gracious to assist with this cause because it does, um, make a significant impact on our community. So, um, Ms. Ashley Owens is here. I think I saw her. We have 25 participants tonight, Madam Mayor. So I think that she is here to, um, give a little bit more information and detail on the presentation.
I am here. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, and remind me all how much time I have tonight.
You have three minutes.
Three?
You have three, but we'll, yeah, you have three.
Three, okay. Um, well, um, am I able to share my screen? Let me try. No, I am not. May I?
Let me allow you to share your screen. Are you ready?
I am. Okay. Um, hopefully you all can see that. As was described, um, I am faculty in the School of Public Health at the, uh, at Georgia State University at the School of Public Health. And we were able to conduct a Clarkston-based community needs assessment. And that was a series of, well, a survey at a series of community-based events where we asked Clarkston residents about how the COVID pandemic has impacted them. And what you see in front of you right now is just the first page of the report that either has been or will be shared with all of you. Excuse me.
Ms. Ashley, I don't know if it's me, but I see a, a drive in front of the screen. I don't necessarily see the, okay. And I see a wonderful image there. And I don't see the presentation.
So you're not seeing a PDF? It doesn't say key takeaway? You do? Okay. Okay, wonderful. Um, so this is just the key takeaways that I'm sharing with you, and I can walk through a couple of other things in the time that I have, and then I'm happy to take questions or you can send me those via email, given the time constraints. Um, so you can see here that probably the results will not be surprising to most or all of you. Financial problems, um, limited English skills, and staying healthy during COVID were kind of the main problems that people in Clarkston reported facing during the pandemic. And really, when we asked them, what would make your lives better? Living wage jobs, higher wages, financial stability. Um, we had quite a, quite a bit of feedback about housing problems, food insecurity, um, some feedback about education, um, and a need for access to education. The other thing I'll just share with you, I'm going to scroll down now. Just want to highlight very briefly that this was an incredibly diverse sample, just like the lovely city of Clarkston. Um, about 44% black, black or African American. Um, and you can see kind of how the other sections there, um, are broken down. Um, in terms of other demographics, you can see, you know, a lot of people in the sample, um, do not speak English at home. A lot of people were foreign-born. Um, quite a few people were identified as refugees and, um, three out of 10 live below the poverty level. And you can see there at the very bottom, the number, um, the diversity of languages spoken, which once again won't come as a surprise to any of you. Just quickly highlight about the housing difficulties. You can see that there's quite a bit of housing insecurity in Clarkston. Four out of 10 people have, have had trouble finding a place to live. Four out of 10 are behind on their mortgage or rent, and four out of 10 can't pay next month's mortgage or rent. In terms of food insecurity, about half of people skipped meals because they didn't have enough money. And three out of 10 reported, um, being hungry because they didn't have enough money. A lot of employment-related issues, um, particularly because of COVID, people stopping work because of COVID, people being laid off because of COVID. Some issues certainly around computer access for children during the pandemic, um, in terms of having access to a computer, not having internet access. Um, certainly, again, this won't be surprising, some issues related to healthcare. About half reported having trouble getting healthcare, about half reporting having trouble getting medicines. People reporting needing care but not being able to get it. Uh, four out of 10 reporting needing counseling or therapy but not getting it. Um, and people about half not getting routine vaccinations, so things like flu, pneumonia, things like that. And finally, just wanted to provide you with some of the data about COVID vaccination in our community. Um, most people, um, had had, or I would say four out of 10 had had COVID, actually. Um, and about half knew someone who was hospitalized or died from COVID. Um, a lot of challenges getting access to the vaccination. Um, and but had heard that it was recommended, um, by their healthcare professional. And about 40% having heard negative information about the vaccine. And that's something that our Prevention Research Center and so many other organizations and many of you are really working hard and have been to combat all of that negative and misinformation about the vaccine in the community. And I want to just end on a positive note, and that is here at the bottom. Um, that we had a very high rate of vaccination. Um, seven out of 10 had had either one or two doses of the vaccine. That's consistent with what our other Prevention Research Center data at GSU has shown that actually Clarkston has outpaced other neighboring communities that are similar in terms of vulnerability with respect to COVID vaccination. So I think that as a community in Clarkston, and I'm a Clarkston resident as well, um, we have a lot to be proud of, um, in terms of how well the, the city at large is doing in terms of vaccination. Um, certainly, we still have a ways to go. Um, and there will be future, um, challenges because of the pandemic is not over. I have to give that plug as a public health professional, but I do want to just end and comment on how the amazing work that all of you are doing and that we're trying to contribute to, um, is making the difference. So I will stop there. I'm happy to share any other, um, details. There's certainly a lot more than what I've shared today, but again, that report will be provided to you if it hasn't already. Um, and I will put my email address and name and contact information in the chat. If you have methodological questions about how the survey was done, I'm happy to share that with you, additional detail at any time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ashley, more time to go ahead and explain. We're here for you. Please feel free to do that.
Well, I'll just take, um, any questions, if there are any, about the sample, about the methods that we use. Um, any, any questions at all, I'm happy to answer.
Counsel, did you have any questions for Ms. Ashley?
Hey, could you just kind of outline the sample and the method really quickly for us?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so basically, what we did was we pulled together a, um, an instrument, a survey based on questions that have been validated and are reliable, um, from the CDC and the NIH. So these are all validated and reliable measures. We programmed those into a survey system called Redcap. Um, I'm sorry, called Qualtrics. Using Redcap for a different project, called Qualtrics. Then we had Qualtrics work with their international team of tran, of professional translators to translate the survey into eight different languages. Um, so the, the whole survey was conducted in eight languages other than English as well as English. Um, we, um, all of the, the surveys were implemented using electronic devices, so generally laptops and phones that have access to the internet. Um, we conducted probably about six or seven survey events that we held in the community. One at the Clarkston campus of GSU, um, three or four at the Clarkston Community Center, and then a handful of others at different events that community-based organizations in Clarkston were already hosting. Um, so we would join those community events and invite people to take the survey at those events. Um, and that was a great opportunity to try to recruit people who maybe would not have otherwise made a special trip um, to the community center or to a GSU campus to take the survey. We paid $20 for the survey. It took between 15 and 45 minutes. There was quite a range in terms of how long it took people. Most of that was really dependent on kind of their language proficiency and, and reading proficiency, but, um, that, the average was about 20 to 30 minutes. Um, and the total sample was, I think, 92 or 93 after we cleaned our data. Our total sample was about 138. Does that, um, Jamie, does that kind of hit the main things that you're wanting to hear about?
Yeah, that answers my question. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Ashley, I, I want to make sure to thank you and the team for all the hard work. The ambassadors that were also part of this as well. Um, everything that you guys are continuously doing to help the city and to help our greater community. Uh, we really appreciate this partnership with you because it has been invaluable for all the residents of Clarkston, not only from a data perspective, but also from just the other opportunities that we've had to engage with you and the community. And Counsel, did you, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I certainly, uh, don't want to remiss, uh, saying also thank you, uh, to Ashley. Um, full disclosure, I am very proud to be serving as the co-chair, uh, and of PRC and definitely be proud to be serving with, uh, Mayor Burks on the, on the advisory board. And, um, I really want to say thank you so much for all that you do, and that will follow in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate all of your support, um, throughout all, you know, through all of our PRC activities and, um, really are happy to have such a strong partnership. So we appreciate your time tonight, and I know you have a long agenda, and I'm, you know, of course, I'm going to put my information in the chat. Happy to answer any other questions that come up for any of you, provide additional details. Um, and do let me know if, aside from the, the report that we've provided to all of you, if there are any other questions that you would like answered that can be data-driven. Um, I know Mayor Burks and Awet, I mean, you, you all are, are important sources of that, but for the rest of you, we want our data to be helpful to the city council. We don't want it to just be published in academic journal. We want it to be used. So please think of us as a resource for helping to answer questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and we want to make sure, and especially to work with our interim city manager um, for any additional, uh, issues or things that we need to have done. You guys have been amazing. So with that, thank you, Ms. Ashley. And we'll turn it back over to, uh, City Manager Cowie and proceed with the next item.
That's the question, Madam Mayor, and I think that was, um, Mr. Matford.
Yes.
Mylan Park.
How about public comment for item 4A?
Yes, you, would you like to make a comment?
I had signed up for it. Okay, uh, I just want to say this was an absolutely amazing research project. Um, this was money well spent. This set the bar for research in our city. I really do. The way that this was conducted and the findings, I really think were what we need to aspire to for every outreach going forward. I know it was not cheap, but we are a unique city. And so this is above what I was expecting, just really seeing how this has played out. I mean, the, I'm, the findings I'm sad about. I think we have places now we can grow that we can use this for. Um, but the methodology and the outreach, and I saw where this was being conducted, um, very effective. And I, this is, to me, this is where we need to be going, this, this exact method. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Matford. We appreciate that comment, and we'll just keep it going with this partnership. Ms. Cowie, do we have anyone else signed up for this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So then we'll proceed with number B. Mylan Park Management Contract.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, this is to discuss the contract renewal with Sears Pool Management Consultants Incorporated. Um, Mr. Dethnall has a more detailed, um, uh, background for us before we present this, um, item. And I'll just give a, a small background in, um, in January 2020, the city issued a request for proposals for pool management services. And, um, we did receive three ser, uh, three proposals for this. And then in March in 2020, the city, um, closed down to the COVID, um, pandemic. And during this time, a recommendation was not presented to city council on the pool management services. So Sears Pool Management Service continued their services of managing our pool opening in the May of 2020. Well, for, there were some internal discussions, and then we went with another contract. But currently, for the 2021 pool service season, um, a contract was signed with Dynamo Pool Management on May, in May of 2021, to provide those services to the city. For the 2022 pool season, staff requested an update to the submitted request for proposal. And as you see or have them, they are listed below. Um, and they're Dynamo Pool Management for $58,200 and Sears Pool Management for $53,750. And, uh, Mr. Dethnall, Finance Director, if you have any additional information you want to provide before we go into discussion, that will be very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I would just add that, uh, you see the, the proposals this year are quite a, a bit more than previous years. And both companies expressed, uh, you know, they've had to, um, go up on their, uh, labor, their wages, and, you know, the recruiting of, of staff, and that's the reason both companies, uh, were pretty close in their proposals. And that was the main reason for the increase for the 2022 pool season. And just as an aside, um, in 2021, we brought in about $21,000 of fees for, um, for, for the pool, when people pay to come to the pool. So, you know, the city subsidizes that through the, uh, parks budget out of the general fund.
Okay.
Uh, don't there any other questions or?
Okay, Counsel, did you have any questions as it relates to this item? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I just got a procedural question. Uh, I mean, since this is not on the agenda, why are we having presentation on it? I mean, why just go ahead and put it on the agenda, I guess, and it's already been bid, and I don't really see why we have to have a presentation if it's not on the agenda.
It is for administrative.
It's under administrative session, in, in the administrative sess, section. So under the administrative section, this is where staff can bring up items such as this. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Counsel? Hearing none? Yes, Ca, uh, Councilwoman Hood. And unmute yourself. There you go.
Um, do they make an effort to hire locally? Or is that done for, um, lifeguards?
Yes, the, yes, they, um, we have worked with, uh, Donetta O'Hara out of our office has worked with, um, Sears Pool Management to help them advertise at, um, the two colleges outside the city, Clarkston High School, Tucker High School. Yes, they do try to recruit locally.
Thank you.
Any other couns, any other comments from the counsel? Hearing none? Ms. Cowie, do we have any from the public?
Matford.
Mr. Matford?
Actually, it was Amy, but that's okay.
Okay, Mrs. Matford. I'm sorry.
Um, no, it's fine. Uh, we had a great time at the pool last year. It was well-managed, and the lifeguards that they hired did a stellar job, which is different in, than in previous years where the running and management of the pool hasn't been as, as great. So, um, I just wanted to put a, you know, throw a yay, guys, at the group that did it last year and how hard they worked to keep the pool going um, and to keep the lifeguards on task and give them the support they needed to, um, keep a safe and excellent pool season. And we can't wait to get back to the pool again, now that COVID things are lesser, and it'll be a lot more fun. I was curious to know if the season pass was going to come back, or if there were going to be swimming lessons offered at the pool this year. That was something that we've done in the past. It's been really great. And so I was hoping to have something like that, or to see something like that come back now that, hopefully, we are on the other end of the COVID issues and concerns.
Thank you for your comments and your questions, and we'll make sure to follow up with that. And staff will write, staff is writing down, um, some of the comments that you made. So thank you, Mrs. Matford. Anyone else signed up? Okay, with that, we'll close it out, and we'll turn to item C, which is the Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition Presentation. And I'll let Vice Mayor Yasu do this one.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, uh, I actually had the pleasure, um, of, um, visiting their office. Uh, I, I think it was in January. And, uh, so firsthand on what the organization does, it's really very, uh, inspiring, uh, to see them helping, uh, so many needy people. Um, but I, I will let the organization representatives, um, go ahead and do the full, um, uh, the full presentation. But, uh, I'm very excited that they're op, they're actually considering opening, um, uh, an office very close to Clarkston. And, um, uh, looking forward to that, but, um, I'm just, uh, I just want to make sure if, uh, we just for our community to get to know the organization and also the city council to get to know what they do as well. Thank you.
Okay, and who is our presenter?
Hi. Hi, my name is Moshe Gonzalez, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition. And, uh, we also have Malette Solomon, our Development Director. Malette, are you able to share the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. It's very nice to meet you guys, and thank you so much for having us. Can you put it on presentation mode? Like if you click on slide, I think.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Okay, no problem. Um, hopefully.
Go across the top where you say, see where it says format slide.
I did. It's not doing it. I'm so sorry.
Next one, next to slide there. This is it.
I think it would have to click, um, you cannot see.
If you can click slide across the top. Yeah.
Can you see it? Can y'all see?
Yes, we can, we can see it. Yeah.
It's fine.
I think we were just trying to kind of like, yeah. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much again. So again, my name is Moshe Gonzalez. I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition. And so today, we would like to share a little bit about our organization with you. Um, Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition was established in 1994. And basically, uh, in the southwest Atlanta area, there were high rates of HIV and hepatitis C. And so there were concerned citizens, professors, and students from Emory University who were just trying to figure out why is that? What's causing this, this such high rates of, um, infectious disease in the community? And so what was identified was high rates of injection drug use in the community. The area is known as Bluff, and it is one of the highest drug dealing area in the country, drug trafficking area. And so this is why, um, you know, uh, basically sharing needles, use needles was leading to high rates of HIV and hepatitis C. Um, back then, in 1994, syringe exchange or syringe, what is known as syringe services program, uh, was not legal in the state of Georgia. And so folks were kind of forced into sharing needles, reusing needles, and that's, um, again, it was leading to high rates of both bacterial infection, infectious disease, and overdoses. So, um, this is how the organization was started as an outreach. And then later on, in 1995, Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition Incorporated was officially established as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. So, um, today, you know, 20, almost eight years later, uh, we work, um, in so many different arenas, and so our work is around working with marginalized communities. We work with the LGBTQ community, more specifically men, men who have sex with men. We work with racial minority. We work with women. We work with immigrants. Um, we work with people who engage in sex work, people who use and inject drugs. And so essentially, people who are with low socioeconomic status and homeless, um, and anybody who's marginalized, estigmatized, um, from the community and like don't have access to, um, um, health and is not able to, um, gain optimal health. So what is our philosophy? It's in our name, harm reduction. Um, harm reduction, as the name indicates, is reducing harm. I was using a, um, example to a student a few days ago that I would like to share here. So we all love going to the beach. There's no one who's going to stop us going to the beach, but we all know sun can damage our skin. It can cause aging. It can lead to cancer issues. And so what do we do? We put a sunblock on, and that's harm reduction. Harm reduction is used for people who inject drugs and use drugs, but providing them with clean, sterile syringes, Narcan that reverses overdose, and it's also provided to the community at large um, to prevent other infectious diseases such as HIV or hepatitis C by providing the community with condoms, uh, with medications such as PrEP and NPEP. And it also prevents teenage pregnancy and unwanted pregnancy through birth control methods. Um, so that's harm reduction. Harm reduction. So, that's harm reduction. Harm reduction means that each individual gets to set a goal that is specific to that individual. So, there's no such a thing as one prescription fit all. And harm reduction also means that the community meets individuals at where they are and we treat everybody with respect and dignity. Can you go to the mission? Next slide, please. Thank you. So, here's our mission statement. We're a community-based wellness organization, committed to promoting health and dignity by reducing the impact of HIV/AIDS, hepatitis C, sexually transmitted infections and substance use within vulnerable communities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so, we envision a world where all people are accepted, valued and have access to healthcare and support that leads to a fulfilling life. Next slide, please. So, I already shared about our history with you guys. This is Ms. Mona Bennett. Ms. Mona Bennett is one of the co-founders of the organization and has been with us for about 28 years. She's still a staff member at our organization and her title is an ambassador. Next slide, please. And so here's the harm reduction. We talked a little bit about what the strategy is. Here is the cycle of change or stages of change model. So, it goes from pre-contemplation to maintenance. Pre-contemplation is when an individual does not know that a problem exists nor is willing to do anything about it. The next step is contemplation where the individual identifies there's the issue, but is not willing to do anything about it. The next stage is determination where they know there's the issue and they're willing to do something about it. Then comes action and then maintenance and sometimes relapse. So, this is what we do. This is our role as harm reduction is to assist individuals to go from pre-contemplation to all the way to maintenance, but holding individuals' hands, helping them along the way. And we do not believe in the concept of you use, you lose. We're here even if it means after 100 try, you relapse. We're here to hold your hand again at the 101st or first try again.
I'm sorry, could we, oh, we missed that last slide with the cycle. Could we look at it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes. So, as you can see, it starts from pre-contemplation to contemplation to determination to action, maintenance. And, um, you know, it could go to relapse or it could go back to if at any point an individual relapses, they start at pre-contemplation stage again. And that's where we are to assist them throughout the process. Next slide, please. Okay, so annually, we serve about 30,000 individuals in the state of Georgia. Majority of our participants are within the Atlanta MSA, which is Cobb County, DeKalb County, Gwinnett County and Fulton County. So, who do we provide services to people that, you know, who are facing social status issues, economic status issues, health status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and like we said, anybody who's part of a marginalized community pretty much. Next slide, please. Here's our Board of Director. It's unfortunately missing two newly, two new individuals, two newly new board members. So, our board is a very diverse board. It's included of seven members. We have folks from finance to marketing to fundraising, legal and medicine on our board who provide us array of consultation and just feedback so that we can enhance our work every day. Next slide. That is me. Next slide, please. So, quickly, I would like to go over some of our programs with you. We are a one-stop shop. We provide almost every service that you could imagine. And the reason for that is although in true nature, we're infectious disease healthcare provider. We believe that when you work with marginalized community, you, folks have so many needs, basic, essential and supportive, that healthcare is not the first thing on their mind. When you don't have food on the table, you don't care about a cough. When you're, you don't have childcare, there's no way you can attend a clinic session. So, our goal here is to identify those basic, essential and supportive need and provide them to you. Our prevention program allows for us to go into the community seven days a week, all hours, day, afternoon, evening, as well as nighttime, all the way to three in the morning and provide rapid HIV hepatitis C and SDI testing to marginalized communities. Next slide, please. We do also hepatitis A education. We provide condom distribution and we also educate folks on PrEP, one pill a day that can prevent HIV. Next slide, please. Our clinic allows for us to provide treatment for HIV, hepatitis C, sexually transmitted infections. We do immunization. We do preventative care. We do medication assisted treatment, which allows individuals who are using drugs to become functional members of society by getting our buprenorphine, which is the box of subutex or vivid trial. We also provide limited primary care. We also do women's health. Our clinic is a no-fee clinic. So, we do not charge any of our patients for any of the services, allowing them to access healthcare. We accept walk-ins and we do not penalize patients for not showing up to their appointment or showing up late, knowing that they already face many struggles. And here we are walking, working with them to gain optimal health. Next slide, please. So, next slide, please. Our linkage to care model, which is the center of our organization, provides strength case management to individuals by identifying their basic, essential and supportive needs and connecting them to the best care in Atlanta. Majority of the care are provided at AHR, but we also have partner organizations such as First Step Staffing who provide some employment within 48 hours of identification. Next slide, please. So, um, I think we already talked a little bit about our services at linkage. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you so much. So, our drop-in center is one of our oldest programs. This is where individuals from our community get to come in, stay away from the chaotic lives that they're experiencing on daily basis and yet have access to healthy meals and groceries, support groups, showers, get hygiene kits, use phone and fax, access our computer lab, receive clothing, attend supporting group and also pick up their mails. Next slide, please. We do a lot of outreach. So, we do outreach specifically for individuals who engage in sex work at night between the hours of nine to one, where we provide them with meals. We provide them with safety packets and we can, we engage them in meaningful conversation so that we can assist them in any way that they need support. We also have the, we're the only syringe services program as of now for the past 27, eight years in the state of Georgia, where we provide clean needles to our people who use drugs. We also provide Narcan, which is a drug that reverses an overdose. And we also provide safety equipment such as cottons and tourniquets to prevent transmission of HIV and hepatitis C in the state. Next slide, please. Our advocacy program allows us to provide education around harm reduction to our community members. So, we provide this education not just to our immediate community, but also to schools, to conferences. And, you know, we sponsor Southern Harm Reduction Conference every year annually, where around 300 individuals in deep south attend our conferences and we provide up-to-date information, both clinical as well as, as well as statistics and data to our service providers.
Ms. Sar, I want to make sure we have enough time for you to be able to do comments. So, if you can just make sure we can wrap it up a little bit, okay?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Sure. So, why don't we, Malette, go? Thank you. So, I just quickly wanted to say that our efforts has allowed us to pass two bills. In 2004, we were able to pass the overdose prevention bill that allowed Narcan to be distributed to community members. And in 2019, syringe exchange became legal in the state of Georgia. And then let's go to partners, Malette, really quick. So, we have many partners, federal, state, county, city and foundations who provide us funding to provide these services. And then if you go to expansion, please. And so we are very excited that this year, so currently we're located at Joseph E. Boone in the city of Atlanta. We have seven offices and we're very excited that as of May, we will be opening our second office in the city of Atlanta, again on Joseph E. Boone. And we just signed our lease today. So, starting October of 2022, we are, we will be opening our third location in Stone Mountain in DeKalb, where it's very close to Clarkston. And we are, we will be providing same services to our community members over there. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And just FYI, you, you used to be in my old life, one of, one of our partners at the FDHA. And also, one of the things that we did with you guys is that we partnered with the city of Clarkston and you gave us Narcan for our police officers. So, we've already started that partnership with you. And so we're very happy that you are here in the area. And Vice Mayor Yasu, thank you for bringing this presentation. Counsel, do you have any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Very much for the presentation.
Yes, I totally agree. I also want to say thank you so much. I actually, like when I was at their office, something I can never forget. I saw this homeless man. He just took a shower and changed his new clothes. And he said, "I'm a new man." And that was really something I can never forget. So, that you guys are making the people feel, you know, that you're new people and I really appreciate it. And thank you again for bringing, for reminding us, Mayor, that, that, that they did help us with Narcan to our police officers and we definitely be working more as you guys can be closer to our, to our city. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. I do have one question. Yes. I'm sorry, the Narcan, what, exactly what drugs would that reverse an overdose on?
Uh, it reverses opiates.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, we'll close out and then thank you again for coming and presenting. The next item we have is item D, which is the opioid. Coincidence there? Settlement State of Georgia and Local Government's Memorandum of Understanding Concerning National Distribution in Johnson &amp; Johnson Opioid Settlement. Ms. Calwee.
Um, Madam Mayor, before we go to that item, Mr. Michael, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. I did see your hand up. Did you have a question or a comment about the previous presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm Mike Shapak, resident of Stone Mountain Village. Your next door neighbors. Howdy, folks. Y'all have a great, great city and I really enjoy watching work get done for the people. My question actually is, could we have our police department contact you about getting Narcan issued to our officers? As far as I know, we carry assault rifles, but nothing to help somebody who's in distress. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate that comment. And you're welcome to come watch us anytime you want to. We like that.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
All right. So, thank you, Ms. Calwee, for that. Thank you. So, anything else? If not, we'll proceed with item D. Ms. Calwee.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is related to an opioid settlement. The State of Georgia and Local Government Memorandum of Understanding Concerning the National Distribution and Johnson &amp; Johnson Opioid Settlement. This was in discussion with our city attorney and he may be able to shed a little bit more light on why we are actually participating in this statewide lawsuit. Mr. Quinn?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So, you know, basically, this is a class action situation. And the city of Clarkston has been identified as a potential class member. So, this is at a very preliminary stage where they've basically contacted City Hall and ask us to basically express preliminary interest or not. I mean, my recommendation would be to express interest and once we see the details, it'll likely be to participate. The reason being that, you know, you have two options. Participate in this and basically get whatever our share would be. And I have no idea what that would look like money-wise or otherwise, but something. The other option would be to, you know, file a lawsuit against Johnson &amp; Johnson ourselves, which I think would be extremely difficult and expensive. And I don't know that we, you know, when I talked to Ms. Calwee, we weren't able to really put our thumbs on how we would document our losses. So, anyway, the idea is that the state has reached a settlement with the company. That settlement includes the option for local governments to participate. By participating, you get a share based on your population. By not participating, you will get nothing and retain the ability to prosecute our own lawsuit if we were to want to do that.
Thank you. Is, or do we, do we have any questions from the council at this time or need any clarification?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this discussion needs to be an executive session or not. I just want to ask first before I ask any question.
Well, let me hear the question if you don't mind. I think it's probably.
My question is, so, do we have an option? If this, I think this settlement seems like it's an offer that state of Georgia or this organization or this companies or whatever this makers of these products are present, are giving us the offer. So, I'm just not sure what options do we have, whether we have to accept whatever they're giving us or or what if we don't want to accept it, what happens?
Well, I can answer that for you. And there's nothing that we need to, it doesn't need to be in an executive session. So, I mean, the state of Georgia joined with other states and invested a bunch of money and time into prosecuting a lawsuit against Johnson &amp; Johnson. And in short, that lawsuit says that you, Johnson &amp; Johnson, made these opiates misled doctors and patients about the impact they would have on their health. And basically, distributed them in a way that you knew or should have known was reflective of these products being abused. And then as we probably all have heard, you know, many, many people overdose, died, lives ruined. And that has a economic impact on state and local governments. For, you know, just to take one small example, it would be like if DeKalb County pays for people to run the ambulance and the emergency room at Grady. And when people overdose on these opiates, they go there, they might not be able to pay. So, the state has paid for that. You add up that and a thousand other little losses, one by one, and it gets to a huge amount of money that these governments could trace back to Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, they filed a lawsuit and now that lawsuit has been settled. So, Johnson &amp; Johnson agreed to pay X dollars to settle the whole lawsuit with a bunch of states, including Georgia. So Johnson and Johnson agreed to pay X dollars to settle the whole lawsuit with a bunch of states, including Georgia. So Georgia is entitled to Y dollars, which is some percentage of the total. Now, Georgia is offering to split that Y amount of dollars with the local government. So they would get Z dollars, which is their split of the state's share based on population. Okay, so I don't know those numbers, so this is preliminary, and they'll later tell us more. But we have really three options. One is, we're not at a point of deciding, to be clear. Right now, they just want to know, are you interested? So if we say yes, then we will receive further information on the future. Depending on how many cities say yes, we'll know how many ways they slice that pie. And then they will come back to us and say, Clarkston's Z variable is fifty thousand dollars. I'm just totally saying a random number. And, and then we could decide, well, we're going to either accept that or not. So by accepting it, it means you get this relief right now without having to hire a lawyer or prove anything or do anything. Your other option is to decline it. If you decline, then, I mean, the reason I would recommend declining is if we're able to demonstrate dollars that are greater than Z to the point where we want to invest our money and time in it. I, I, at this stage, I, I would expect that to be unlikely to be the case. Um, I guess another reason if the council were so declined would be to just decline and have nothing to do with it and receive nothing. Um, but I can't think of an advantage to that approach.
Okay. Yes, and so I'm gonna, Council, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu, I'm gonna also invoke something that is in our charter that some wise councilperson brought to my attention. So when we have these items, we allow council members to have two times to speak on, okay? So I'll make sure we'll, to be efficient with the time, but it's something in our charter that says that. So Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, thank you. Well, uh, I think uh, I, I just was gonna tell uh Stephen that he really answered the, the question that I had in my mind. And from this point, I think uh, I don't see uh no reason for, as far as I'm concerned, that for us to say no. I, I'm not aware of uh, a, a major um loss that we have had. Uh, I'm pretty sure we had had some losses uh indirectly, but uh, I really am not aware of any direct losses. Um, but uh, I think uh, that sounds reasonable. I'm pretty sure as in cities like Atlanta might not be interested because they probably might have a lot more losses than this. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
I, I would agree with Vice Mayor Yasu. I don't think there's any downside to just telling them we're interested.
Okay. So, let's do this. This, the opioid um settlement of Ms. Cowie is from, from moving forward. If this is something that we get consensus from the council, can we put this on consent agenda? Okay, so with that being said, if there isn't any issues with us moving forward as being a part of this, can we agree to have this as an item for consent agenda, counsel? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Outstanding. Thank you. So we'll move this item as part of our consent agenda. And next, Ms. 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 Cowie, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
They did. We do not. Madam Mayor, I did see Councilwoman Hopkins' hand up, but it was lowered, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, all right, we're good. Okay, thank you. If hearing no one else wanting to speak on this item, we'll move on to Empower Clarkston, and we'll have Councilwoman Bell to do this introduction.
Thanks, uh Mayor Burks. Good afternoon, everybody. I've invited Luke and Allison to present on the Empower Program. On the Empower Clarkston Program, it's a training program that was introduced in Clarkston in partnership with a few local um partners in Clarkston. Um, the program was able to deal skills and knowledge in a growing industry um for refugees in our community while providing services to our residents to help to reduce the utility and water bills in their residence. And so I'd advise Luke and Allison to give us a brief presentation tonight. Uh, and thank y'all for coming out.
Yeah, thank you, YT. Uh, grateful to be on here. I know many of you on here already. Um, I will share my screen, and I'll keep this as brief as possible for you guys. Um, can you guys see that okay? Um, so real quick, uh, Tecton has been around for eight years. Um, my wife and I co-founded it about eight, eight years ago. And um, uh, with the goal of empowering the community with uh great jobs, um primarily centered around skilled trades. Um, we've expanded a little bit to do more uh web development, coding type of trades. Um, but specifically when it comes to Empower Clarkston, um, this has been a partnership kind of leaning on our, our background these eight years um in providing these type of skills that are focused on upward mobility, um really having a, a, a good view of the job market, understanding what skills we, we can actually provide, um, as well as centering them around the mentorships, uh mentors that can come in and help come beside them. Um, again, so they can kind of see that upward mobility and then eventually job placement. Um, so when it comes to Empower Clarkston, um, as well as everything we've done with Tecton, it's all been about financial stability. Uh, I loved um the, the first um presentation talking about, you know, some of the data that, that has come out around, um, you know, even health and how there's such a connection between health and financial stability. And um, you know, for us, that, that's been our focus since day one, and we've continued to iterate from there. And uh, you know, with the, with the, the primary focus again being that upward mobility, but, but knowing we need to um be willing and able to look outside and, and different opportunities um for that. So that being said, what we were able to do is partner with a number of these organizations you guys probably are well aware of, including the city, um, to provide a two-year job, uh, two-year, two-year um program that would provide job training and um primarily, again, focused on the refugee community. Um, the reason that being, that was the case was because um from, from the data that we've seen, uh refugees tend to be about three times, have about three times the unemployment that kind of an average American-born citizen um has. Um, the program itself was, was providing what we call green construction, so that's a, a brief overview of efficiency, uh making homes more efficient, determining if homes are, have, have uh energy leakage, anything like that. Um, and, and as well as water, and then at, at the completion of the program, job placement. Um, so quick, kind of give you guys a quick numbers on that. So um of the homes we were able to pull the data on, we saw a thirty-three percent increase in the average uh energy consumption. As you can imagine, you talk about entire city, you know, hundreds of homes, that's actually a lot of, a lot of savings. Um, every person that graduated the program, which um was twenty, um roughly twenty apartments and roughly twenty students, um not just apartments, uh homes, kind of single families as well as apartments, but twenty students. Um, every single student that needed a job was able to find a job through the program at the end, at, at the end of the program. And um, and even a few of them were hired by the organization we partnered with, um that provided the retrofitting of the homes. Um, that is the kind of uh end uh part of the program, is we actually go into the homes, provide the efficiency. Obviously, it's where we get that thirty-three percent decrease in, in energy consumption. And uh even one of the students is actually a team lead now. Um, additionally, we, we've actually seen a few of the students that have gone on to join our bigger program, which provides a year-long training um where we can, I won't get into that now, but we've seen even more upward mobility there. And um, a- at this point, um, talking to YT, um, we have expanded the program, which we're really excited about. DeKalb County has verbally committed to our full proposal, which I know we sent over to the council before. Um, it would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars over two years, and that would include another, an additional twenty students. Um, and that kind of is not just necessarily focused on the refugee community anymore, it's just any, any city of Clarkson resident. Um, and then additionally, twenty homes um to continue to reduce the energy burden. And um beyond that, I will quickly show you the, the budget right now. This kind of gives you a quick glance as to where the dollars are going, specifically from DeKalb County. Um, and um expanding beyond that, and this was the reason of the conversation with uh YT and the rest of the city council is expanding this, would allow us to essentially double the program. And so as you can imagine, you know, this, the scope that you saw previously, the, those uh twenty students over two years, those twenty homes over two years, we would be able to double that with the, the uh additional support and uh partnership with the city. And that, I'll keep it short, and that, that's basically the whole thing.
Okay, counsel, do you have any comments? And thank you so much for the presentation. Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins. And you're on mute.
Yep. Are the students in the program working other jobs while they're doing the training? Or is the, I saw there was a stipend for the students. Is that sufficient as an income for them?
Yeah, it's mixed. Great question. Um, generally, most of them do have uh employment. Um, but I, I would say about fifty-fifty. Allison, feel free to chime in on that, but I believe it's about fifty percent of them um end up actually pursuing this as a full-time career.
Most of our guys were working like evening, third shift jobs that were, you know, stackers, packers, those types of things. And so then they were able to transition into something more in the green construction field. And they are paid that, you saw that stipend, they're paid for their classroom training and their in-house training in the residence as well.
Right, but it's not like if a person needed to support their family, they would need to find something else first, and this would be something supplemental. Right?
Correct, yeah. So, so you generally, they're going to be students, um like Allison said, that are, are able to take off the time to actually go through the training. Um, but we didn't want to just provide the training and not support them along the way. The goal of this, obviously, this is the short term with the connection of the long-term upward mobility and employment.
And how many hours a week would the training take?
The classroom training is about twenty to thirty hours. We do inspections on the homes first. So we tailor the training to do, to be what we need it to be. So that's a hard, last time it was about twenty-five hours is what was needed. And then, so that's the first training piece, and then just depending on how many homes we're able to do and how long each choke takes is, is that second part.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you did mention that your program currently focuses, primary focus is refugees, but you wanted to extend the program. Would that include everyone? That is, if you, it's, okay.
The first grant was to friends of refugees, and so it had a um point in there that, that the trainees had to be refugees, but in this second um part, we have removed that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Hood? You're on mute.
I know, I'm raising my hand and I muted myself. There's lots to do. Okay. Um, how long has your organization been in business?
Uh, Tecton has been around uh for eight years.
Eight years. And overall, um, about how many students have um started and completed your program over those eight years?
Just through Tecton, we've had over three hundred. Um, but we actually merged with another organization called RefCode that does web development coding. And that would be about an additional seventy-five students, so oh, oh, almost four hundred students total.
So um, I've sort of missed, uh, didn't quite hear that. So you're, you're partnering with another organization, and that has to do with computer work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so you're doing uh training in skilled jobs and then training in computers. Um, it, what kind of long-term follow-up do y'all do on those three hundred people to see uh if their training has allowed them to stay in the field for a length of time and that sort of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Um, on average, we've seen about a five dollar an hour increase um at completion of the program. Um, and this is specifically focused on the construction side and, and not even, not even talking about Empower Clarkston, because I'm, I'm hearing you ask about the bigger program. So about a five dollar increase per hour. And then we do quite a bit of follow-ups. We have, actually have an alumni network where not only are we continuing following up, you know, assessing how people are doing in their careers at this point, um, but actually, a lot of them now have come back to even um donate to us. We're a nonprofit. And um to support the organization, which is pretty, pretty great, and usually uh means that they're making significantly more money than before. Um, and then actually, a lot of our trainers now, because we, we have certified trainers, you know, people who are actually in the industry, come in and teach, um, are graduates themselves.
Okay, and so, in the construction side, at the end of the training, um, are the students certified in any particular skill from the standpoint of moving toward um the electrician or carpentry or anything like that?
Great question. Um, actually, we used to do what's called NCCER certification. It's, it's generally what you see with a lot of the uh, the tech schools, um high schools, colleges that provide, you know, technical support. Um, frankly, we actually stopped, we stopped certifying them in NCCER because the employers we were working with, um actually providing the jobs, um said it wasn't necessary. Um, as, as you can imagine, it's, it's, it's pretty similar even to the web development coding. It's more about what you could do, if you can show that skill set, and so that's kind of been the focus now. Um, so we don't necessarily do that type of certification, but we have our own internal certification that um the employers we work at really look at and value, and, and, and it really, it means something.
Uh huh. And uh the employers is, is it, you're understanding that um all of the people who complete the program can, can be placed in full-time jobs with that, where they can use their, the skills that they were trained to?
That's the hope. Um, it's, it's, you know, oftentimes, we're also looked at as kind of a prerequisite, if you will, for some even of the unions. So we've had quite a few of our students that um, um, for example, a gentleman named Francis finished our program, um about a two-year-long program from that perspective. He then uh went into the union and essentially an eight-year-long uh apprenticeship program only took him about four years because of what we were able to accomplish.
Okay. Um, so you are a non-profit. Uh, I think, hold on one second, let me just look at my notes. Um, oh, how are the students chosen? Since now it's going to be open to anyone in Clarkston, how are the uh criteria? What, you know, if there are ten openings and you get fifty applications, uh, what are the criteria and who, who sets the criteria?
That's, you have, you're full of great questions. Um, so we, of course, have an application, and we go through that process. And then we also do an introductory, like, English and math assessment, because those are things that are going to be needed. Um, math and measuring, we actually are having the construction class walk out right behind me, and they were doing like metrics, you know, imperial systems and things, and so we test on that as well. And then if we have an abundance of students, then there would be like an interview process type of thing that we would be going through um to kind of it, get our, our final ten picked out.
Uh huh.
Okay. Is there any cost to the student?
There is no cost to the student. They are receiving um their stipend. They also walk away with a tool bag that's valued about, about a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, so they're walking out with their own tools, get, you know, getting ready to get started. Um, and we also ask, to a certain degree, the um homes that we're entering, they are kind of providing like lunch for the guys, which is really cool, because then they're able to interact with the homeowners as well.
Uh huh. I saw that you had um a line item for data management, energy, and water burden mapping. So that would be to Clarkston housing base?
Yeah, so we ask all of the residents that we're going into to give us, um, I'd say permission for their Georgia water and their um electrical bills. So we are actually going to be tracking that, like the before, what it looked like before we did our So we are actually going to be tracking that, like the before, what it looked like before we did our retrofits and then what happens after. So that's where, when Luke talked about the thirty-three percent decrease in energy burden, we've been able to actually track the bills and see that there's been a thirty-three percent decrease in the cost for these families that we have been able to go into their homes.
Like, how, how are the overall ten homes or twenty homes originally picked?
Those are picked based on their energy burden. So the residences that have the highest energy burden based on income in the house is who we go, is, is how we pick those.
And that's where the data management costs. So there's, there's some high-level look at the income and energy. I saw that water was in here also. So, so there's some high-level look at the number of houses or whatever duplexes.
Yeah.
In Clarkston. And then go from that to the list of people that you would approach, et cetera.
Yeah.
About asking too many questions. I'm gonna put that to the mayor.
No, I'm gonna make sure, because you took care, you know, we don't have to ask any questions that you took care of everything for. And we appreciate it. Thank you, Councilwoman Hood.
All right.
We come back.
Just one more question. Did you say that the budget that, that is before us, the one that you showed, that was the budget that the Cab County was presented with and approved and that, that the Cab County did a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And that that's the same you're putting the proposal to us for? Did I get that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so you're doubling your program. Are you, do you have, how are you going to ramp up to have double the number of students? Or was this to camp program a previous year?
No, the DeKalb program will start, we're hoping, I think it's a May first contract start with them. So that's in the works. Where we are able to do most of our recruiting is, a lot of times, like City of Clarkston last time, in our pilot program, was able to refer people who are going to them for assistance in those types of things. So they're able to refer their homeowners that way. And then honestly, as you know, word of mouth in Clarkston is amazing. And so if you just get a couple of the flyers in the right people's hands and then you're able to, to really build a lot of the student base that way is, is how we saw that happening.
And I was thinking about your trainers.
Okay.
You have. I'm gonna let Vice Mayor Yasu get to this, the next question, Councilwoman Hood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everything. You took care of everything for us. I mean, we don't have to write a book or thing. Thank you. Because you thought about stuff that we didn't even think about. So we appreciate it. So Vice Mayor Yasu.
Yeah, I think she stole some of it from my mind as well. But I had a quick couple of questions. The first one is, so the number of clients that your organization served, I heard some three hundred individuals were served, I believe. And out of those three hundred, were, were all of them in Clarkston? If not, what was the percentage of, if you have the numbers, what was the percentage for Clarkston residents?
Yeah, so when you, when you said, when, when that question came up, that was in regards to our, our program as a whole. And to be honest with you, I actually, I couldn't even tell you the percent now. I would actually go as far as to say majority of them probably don't live in Clarkston anymore. And that's a whole nother conversation. The brain drain, I know y'all, y'all know is real. But at the time, I would actually say majority, at least seventy-five, eighty percent of them were recruited and living in Clarkston in some capacity.
And you also said something about twenty homes were served and twenty people were trained under some program. What was that?
Yeah, that is the Empower Clarkston. That was the previous cohort. So that was, that was the, the one, the previous one that we partnered with, Friends of Refugees, you guys on as well, a couple other organizations. And that was, that, yeah, that was that previous one.
So did Friends of Refuge just give you guys the funding or they were actively participating?
So technically, they were the, they were the grantee, they were the original grantee. And then we probably did ninety percent of the lifting. Allison can say that. And as you know, they've gone through some transitions. So basically, we were approached to continue the program and because Allison, specifically and the rest of the team, were doing all the work. We've, we're now the direct grantee.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Hopkins.
And we have been talking a bit about doing the workforce development program. And I, I kind of am looking at this as like two years tuition at twelve thousand five hundred dollars per student, which would be what, six hundred and something per year, per student? And I'm wondering, twenty to thirty hours is a significant amount of time for the students to be dedicating to this. What skill set can they expect to have when they come out of it? And, I mean, I just looked at the NCCER certification that you mentioned, and it's not actually a certification. I think it's dozens and dozens of certification, everything from truck driver, crane operator, bricklayer, concrete finisher. So what, what of those skills can they expect to have? And how would they be able to market those skills if they don't have a certification? I mean, they're just, people are expected to take them at their word that they've done this.
Allison, do you want to answer the first question? I can answer the second one.
Sure. So after the first part of Empower Clarkston, the, the pilot program that we had, in this next one, all of the training will actually be very much personalized for the homes that we're going to be going into. And so for the first two cohorts, that looked a lot like window ceiling. I'm by, I'm learning a lot of construction terms, so this may not be right. So we're gonna do my very best. We did a lot of insulation, like the leaky windows, those types of things. We put in, you know, like the, the entries to attics that help. A lot of, actually, the homes that we went into didn't have that. So we were actually in place a lot of those. So a lot of those skills that they're getting in Empower Clarkston are the green construction things. Like I said, the, the air drafts, fixing that, insulation, they replace water, piping, faucets, those types of things. And then Luke, can you handle your second part about the certifications?
Yeah, so that's actually, that's a great question, Ms. Hopkins. We, we decided to pull the NCCER because the employers actually were the ones saying, this is great, but it's actually not necessary. It's, it's more about can the individual weld? Can they prove that they can do, they can frame a home? Can they, can they do drywall? Can they do basic electrical or HVAC or plumbing? And, and so that's actually why we, we got rid of that. And so we, we focused more. It's even like, not to get into the details of it, but it's very overboard in terms of requirements on maintaining a quote-unquote certification. When in again, reality, like the employers, just they didn't care.
All right. And question, so what timeframe are you looking to do something within Clarkston? Outside of what you have with DeKalb County?
Yeah, so the hope it would coincide with, with what we presented and what, what's been committed to with DeKalb. At least that was the kind of original conversation. And so that, that would kind of come to the, Allison, is it, is it June? I believe it's early June.
I believe we are, it is early June where we would start our recruiting. And then our classes start really soon after that is the plan.
Okay. Because our wonderful community development and our economic empowerment committee has some work to do in terms of the workforce development assignment that was sent to them in December. So I know all of this in terms of workforce development and the robust look of it. I'm looking for that wonderful presentation in May, correct? Is that, that correct? Right, right, okay, okay. Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
One more question. What happens if a student is not able to fulfill the whole two-year commitment? What if they do six months and they get a job or a situation that's more demanding than allows them to spend this twenty to thirty hours a week on this?
We have yet to experience that, but what ends up usually happening is that we're able to do it and the, the students are having to actually give us a two-year commitment. It's just the time that it's taking us to recruit, train, and then do the homes. And so a lot of times, it's only looking like anywhere, it, it, the work was, of course, very different during COVID. So we were limited on what we could do, but it, it's really looking about like a six-week commitment from the students from the start of their training to the end of the, the retrofits in the homes. The, the contractors have been really great and are able to block out a lot of time for us, because they're able to do a lot of things back-to-back. And then after that, then we're moving into the job placement, resume workshops, those types of things. And so that we are a little bit more flexible and do that after hours or we're able to offer a lot of, of times to make that happen. And then the goal is that they're taking that and finding their, their full-time placement that they want to be at.
So it's only about six weeks per student on this training? So I was looking at it as a two-year, like, like an internship. I apparently completely misunderstood the program.
I'm, so it's ten students, ten homes within a year's time. And then we replay, we, we do that again. And so we're actually running like two separate trainings during that time with these students. And so we're helping, like ten stu, like I said, ten students in the first year and then letting them go through the whole process. And then we kind of start fresh in the following year.
But does that, ten students, ten homes, is that concurrently? Or are they doing, like, one student works for six weeks and then the next student's being, are they each being trained individually? Or is it all happening simultaneously?
It's a, it's a group training. And so once we get the homes, they're, they're visiting the homes as pairs or teams and, and doing the group classroom training together.
For six weeks?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
All right. I see, I see, I see the, your brain is just processing.
Yeah, well, I see, okay. So twenty to thirty hours a week for six weeks is not nearly the commitment of twenty to thirty hours a week for two years. That's, that's dramatically different from the participants' point of view.
I think that makes the first question make a lot more sense to me now that I understand what you're picturing.
Okay.
So I'm glad we got.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of two-year internship on electrician or something. Yeah, you're not going to learn that in, in six weeks. You're not going to have a certification. But I was thinking of as having finished a two-year internship. Okay.
And then, and then beyond that, you know, typically, we're having a lot of them sign up for our, our class that is actually a year long. And that's, that's actually way more, I mean, that's twice a week for about a year where they're getting, it's essentially the NCCER certification, it's just our own Tecton certification now.
And they're signing up for that class. Is there a charge for that class or is that part of this program?
If, yeah, it will, if they complete Empower Clarkston, they are able to sign up for that class. If a student outside that didn't complete that, there is a charge for the students that do that. But like I said, our guys just left and two of them are actually past Empower Clarkston graduates of that program and they've come back to continue.
So is there a charge for that class after the Empower Clarkston?
If you did not complete the Empower Clarkston, yes, there's a two hundred dollar for a fee for a student to complete the training, the construction training. It's about a year long.
And if they do complete it, there is there a charge?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, gotcha. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cowie, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have Mr. Brian Metford.
Mr. Metford.
Yes, so I was lucky to not only be training construction back in high school, but also to work in it for a while. And also working two other trades over my work career. And what I'm hearing now from my friends who are still in these trades is there's a desperate cry for new people coming in. And this is really an important program, I think, to help train and fill that, because the openings that are coming for everybody who has been displaced or retired, what is old knowledge. This is really a great opportunity and these are good jobs. These are really good jobs, especially how some of these trades have moved into more technologically advanced areas. So electrical isn't just what it used to be. It's not disconnecting up outlets. It gets complicated. Same thing with heating, cooling, same thing with plumbing, all the construction, especially with energy efficiency. So these are good future jobs and I extremely am supportive of this program. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, and just as a reminder, our wonderful committees are gonna bring us some other things back for our May meeting too, with a whole comprehensive look at workforce development. Okay? Anything else, counsel? Hearing now?
I would. I'm sorry, it's me again.
Two? What, is it a question? Because we got two.
It is a question. It is a question.
Can you send it to them to let them know?
All right.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor, you get, this is your second time, so we're good.
This is the last one, believe me. I just want to say, I think you brought up a good question about the workforce development. So I think similar, either this or similar programs would be great. That would like be hitting two birds at the same time. That would be energy efficiency at the same time, also workforce development. So, yeah, that's something that we can definitely pivot on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll close out this item. And we'll move on to, thank you for the wonderful presentation. And we'll move on to all business, which is the discussion of a living urn tree planting at Friendship Forest. Vice Mayor Yasu.
Ah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you recall that we have discussed this subject on our August city council meeting. So sometime last year, I was approached by a representative of Ms. Hardy Blanch's family. And they told me about her story and that she passed away. And her last wish was to be in a living urn and be placed in Clarkston. And I put it on the agenda accordingly and the discussion went on. And at the city council meeting in September seventh, we decided that we can hammer out some questions and referred it to the committee, to the environment committee. And the environment and transportation committee met on January thirty-first and we discussed it thoroughly again. And we cleared up some questions about location and allowable signage or whether we should allow or not. And according to those discussions, I met with, me and Councilmember Hopkins. We met with the representative of the family and we went a long walk on the park. And, you know, we shared some of the concerns that were brought by the committee. And based on all this conversation, I drafted the, the resolution. And on the packet, we have a resolution and we have a separate MOU points, bullet points that I, that I prepared. But there is another draft of the resolution that incorporates some of those conditions. And the, the main sticking point was, you know, the exact location. And that was resolved. And if somebody can help me from our staff, it's on page ninety-two of the agenda. And that's the location that the family member and me and Councilmember Hopkins thought that could be a potential location. So for people to see it, I would like to, if we, you could put it on the screen, I don't know, if that's possible. Awesome. So if you zoom in, this is the place basically at the very bottom of the hill, just before you get the open field. And, yeah, that's perfect. So where Councilmember Hopkins and the family representative are standing, that's where the potential location that they thought would be a, a, a good place that would fit for the tree to be planted. The exact location would definitely have to be decided. But depending on what the recommendation of our work, I mean, I mean, our public works, if, you know, they gotta consider servicing and overall. So we definitely gonna depend on public services on. When, and also our city manager to decide and if this fits it. But um, uh, that's definitely the flexibility that the city manager will have. I, and that, the location was, uh, after we solved the location issue, there was another concern. That some members of the community thought that having a sign would be an issue. Um, uh, make it look like uh, out of place at the park. And um, after so much consideration, actually Councilmember Hopkins came out with a great idea. That instead of putting any signs or anything on the tree, that we would allow the family to put um, a bench. Uh, and they could put any inscription on the bench instead of the tree. So there will be no um. Monument or headstone installed uh, in connection with the, with the tree. Um, so that, uh, I think that, uh, I thought would be a, a good uh, solution. To, to the concern that some people had putting a, uh, like a headstone or anything that would really kind of disturb the. The usage of our park. Um, and uh, another uh, concern that will be uh. Definitely the, the, the bench has to be, you know, solidly installed, and it has to be a good quality. Um, and um, that it has to be installed on a concrete base and solidly uh. Uh, bolted to the ground, and um, uh, that's just for safety and um. Um, and um, overall, the city will not pay any money for planting the tree. Um, so there will be no cost to the city. Um. That's, and, and I, what I really feel like, I think uh, once we uh, allow. And the city council um, possibly allows uh, this. And the next step will be for the family representative to agree on the, on an MOU. That would be um, that'll be pretty much based on those three main points. And there'll be other clause that our city uh, manager can definitely add using the discretion. And um, uh, that will be uh, the final thing before the tree is planted. Once um, the council allows it, then the next one is gonna be MOU signed by the representative. And then that will be uh, there'll be the planting will be the last and final step on this. And um, if you have any questions, I would be definitely be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you Vice Mayor Yasu. So let, let's make sure we're clear as far as what we're doing tonight. So tonight, are we, you know, for next, next week, are we voting on something? Or what, what are we gonna do? So, so the council's kinda?
So we are voting for that resolution, basically. Um, that's in front of us. And um, what we're doing is basically we are allowing the, the family to plant the tree with a condition that. That they will have to agree and sign with our city manager. So um, uh, this is pretty much uh, um, so what we're doing is we're not. Um, uh, saying we're voting and this is done. So we voted and the family member representative has to agree on those conditions and sign on the MOU. Um, in order to get the, the planting done. So um, that definitely ha-, is uh, a condition that's placed on the resolution as well. So we're gonna vote on something hopefully uh, next Tuesday. And um, what we're gonna be voting would be to allow the family members to plant the tree. Considering that they agree on certain conditions, and I am very open if anybody have um, some additional uh, conditions. That um, you see that, that needs to be included in, on the MOU or the resolution. And uh, I think our city attorney can answer this question, but the whole thing is um. We thought this just could be done by the city manager at first, but um, that our city attorney said that. The city council have to actually vote and allow, if they allow it um, or not. And from then, the, the family representative will have to, of course, sign and make, agree on an MOU with our city manager. Before the planting is done. Uh, am I correct, uh, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Quinn?
Quinn?
Uh, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. I mean, but because this is essentially dedicating. A little bit of public property for the foreseeable future to this use. And that's something that the charter calls on the city council to decide. And I think I, I agree that it's reasonable and appropriate for the. City manager to address the details within the parameters of what the council determines by its resolution.
Okay, all right. And so we have a question for council, from Councilwoman Hood, and then followed by Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes, thank you. Um. I just want to uh, raise the idea that uh, if we are accommodating this. Um, uh, and establishing procedures by which this could be done. Uh, it is possible that more people will ask for the same thing or something very similar. And so um, i- if these, uh, we just need to be aware that. This could be something, this could be a, not a one of, but the first of. And uh, so perhaps we just need to keep that in mind when we're. Uh, if we are approving this. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I think it's worth noting that the representative for the family is also a city council member of. I believe Dorville, is that right? And she had mentioned that they had a little park across the street from her up there. Where basically any member of the city could donate anything. They were donating benches. They were donating little garden areas, and they put up little plaques for all of them. And I actually took a drive over there and took a bunch of photographs. I wish I could share them with y'all, but I don't seem to be able to share. On this computer, but um, they had things like this, this garden area was a stone, semi-circular. Stone bench and a big stone water fountain was donated by and done by the Eagle Scouts troop. Whatever, and uh, lots of little benches around. And it just says, you know, was given by, and she said they never did anything nearly as official as what we're going through in this case. And it is a bit different because we, you know, don't have specifically um, a cemetery and a person's remains are gonna be there. But I do think it's worth looking at with the environmental committee going forward of making this a precedent and letting people. Donate benches as long as we set um, standards and parameters of like what they should look like. This family is, you know, it's significantly more than planting a tree. They are donating a bench. And a seating area beside that tree. So um, it's something that I think. Uh, from an equity and inclusion point of view, we need to do anyway. We need benches on that hill. Um, my mom is not the only one puffing, walking back up that hill to the parking lot. And God help you if you're in a wheelchair that's not automated, because your arms are gonna be real sore when you get to the top of that hill. So we need some benches along that hill anyway, but I think the opportunity to let residents donate them. And just put a little plaque donated by um, or donated for this person or in the name of this person. Is not a terrible idea at all. I think it's some way we can enhance our parks without being a major budget draw on the city. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, hearing none, it, it, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I also, I just wanna quickly um, uh, I, I appreciate what Councilmember Hood brought. And that's really why we had a lot of discussion on this. Uh, I agree that, you know, this could be set a precedence. However, that's why we wanted to remove the whole idea of having any. Uh, you know, like stone or any, any inscription that really makes look this place different. So all we're gonna have is a bench, and the bench would certainly be saying, you know, in memory of such and such, or something like that. But it will be something that's useful to our community as well. Uh, and um, uh, so the bench will not be really connected with the tree technically. Even though it's gonna be close to it, and people who know it will definitely know, and we know in Clarkston, but it will not look anything. So in the future, if somebody wants to do similar thing, I honestly, it's a great idea because this would save the environment a lot of. We're using so much land for, you know, cemetery, and um, there is so much um, resources wasted on. On this, um, I'm, I'm not making any comments about religious thing, but I'm, all I'm saying is. Um, it's great if somebody wants to do this, uh, and all they're doing is they're adding another tree and another bench. For the community, and it will not look like um, this will not change anything at the uh, Friendship Forest. And uh, if more people come, I think this would be a good uh, way of handling it by making sure that. You know, they don't put any names or anything o- o- on the trees.
Okay, all right. Thank you Vice Mayor, and thank you council. Did anyone else sign up? Uh, Ms. Cowie?
No.
Oh. I see Mr. Michael.
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind. Uh, that sounds great. I think it's wonderful that you're offering your citizens a chance to commemorate their loved ones and other important events. The one thing I would ask is please, 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 make sure that that tree is a native species, because we are opening up. A slippery slope by just allowing a healthy tree. A tree is a fifty to a hundred year investment. And we sure don't wanna put anything that's going to, to spread, much like uh, uh, the boxwoods and the, and other invasive species. That we currently have. Might be a good idea to make sure that whoever approves this tree, that it's arborist approved. And it has been inspected so that you don't spread anything like the uh, uh, uh. The, the beetle which is currently decimating our forest. And that's all. Other than that, it sounds wonderful. I can't wait to sit, come sit underneath it.
All right, Mr. Michael, I think you're gonna move to Clarkston pretty soon, so we're ready for you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm there. My heart is just getting mad just there.
All right, and Councilwoman Hopkins?
It's an indigenous dogwood. We had already, it was already a prerequisite that it be indigenous if it be in that park, because it is a wildlife preserve.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And um, city manager, Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone else signed up for this one?
No additional speaker.
Okay, with that, we'll close this item out. Um.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I wanna ask if uh, this could be placed on consent agenda? I'm just asking.
Well, council, do you wanna make this a consent agenda item?
I think that'd be fine.
Thumbs up? Okay, we got it. Look at you. Okay, you cutting down our agenda time. Perfect. Next, with that being said, this will be in a consent agenda item, and we'll move on to O Business Item B. Which is the discussion of the cost estimate from the selected vendor, um, Volker, Vol, Volt, Voter. Okay, Incorporated for Splice Zero Nine Professional in Engineering Services for the Mel Avenue Crossing. Multi-leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvement Project. Ms. Cowie, and I see Mr. Kaiser in the background.
There you go, Madam Mayor. You did give us a, a background. Um, previously, we did submit to uh, Mayor and City Council. The previous estimate from Pond Company. Um, we did conclude that that estimate was um, too high. So we went back to the second um, company that submitted a um, proposal. And we spoke with Volkert, and Volkert um, submitted a quote of four hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. And again, um, yes, our consultant engineer, Mr. Larry Kaiser is here to give a little bit more detail about this project.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of council. Um, when Volkert submitted their scope and fee. Uh, their initial fee was five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and some change, um, still too high. Um, so I was able to negotiate with them um, a, a lower fee, less hours. Um, actually reduced their hourly rates uh, for their engineers on this project. Uh, and I also provided them with previous survey work and other work that we performed. Uh, along that roadway, at least on the East Pond side, as a result of our streetscape project. So, and also provide them some information of the CAD county. So I gave them a lot of information that we had accumulated over the last decade or so. Gave that to them, and I said, re-scope it, and re, and provide me with a revised fee. So they came back with a number of four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, we, we scrutinized it, we looked at it, and, and I am. Uh, fine with that number that they presented. Um, I would say that, that I would not recommend that we. I would recommend that we contract for that amount, but only release them for task one, which is concept work. And the reason for that um, is that we will have a better number in terms of what we think the construction costs will be. In about eighteen months, after task one is done, which is the concept work, we will be in a better position to estimate construction costs in the future. Uh, at that point in time, we will submit the project to Atlanta Regional Commission. Uh, we will ask for federal funding on this project. And once we receive that approval, then we can proceed on with the rest of the contract. So, so I would recommend the full dollar amount be contracted, but only release them for task one.
Thank you, and how much contingency is, is in that again? I, I can remember.
Um, I don't, I don't have a num-, I don't have that fee in front of me.
Okay.
Uh, there is a small amount of contingency in there I put in there, just for some minor undones, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Vice Mayor Yasu?
So I got two questions for Mr. Kaiser. The first one is um, so uh. Um, th- there is gonna be um, a federal grant matching, I think, with this project. So how much is the, the amount that the city will be responsible out of this four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars? I mean, almost four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
So all the design uh, councilman is a hundred percent city of Clarkston responsibility. When we submit for construction funding, eighteen months to two years from now, that is when we will receive, hopefully receive. Approval from Atlanta Regional Commission for funding eighty percent of the construction cost.
So my second question is, this is kinda weird because we still don't have the funding yet. I mean, I thought we got a grant and we are doing this, uh, and we will use, so. So this is interesting, because if the, if we don't get approved, I guess the city will have to pay the entire amount. Uh, of the cost. Um, but what I, my understanding was um, that we have already. Secured the grant and uh, uh, we will be uh, paying a certain portion of it on.
You can't secure a grant without doing some design work. On our federally funded construction project like this, a councilman. You cannot obtain any kind of money from GDOT, from Atlanta Regional Commission, until you actually expend some of your own money. Uh, and so that's what we're doing in the design phase. So this is typical of every project we've ever pursued. Uh, for the most part. So what you do is you do the design work, you do what's called the PE, which is the concept work. You get the environmental out of the way, you do your estimates of construction cost. The biggest component of a federally funded project is the concept phase, which is task one. So what we do is, and this is, every government does this, you do the PE, you get that out of the way, you submit to the Atlanta Regional Commission. And the chances of us getting funding for this is, is like ninety-nine percent in terms of federal funding. Uh, and so I don't, I don't have, there's not gonna be any issue with us getting federal funding. And again, if there is. Here's, here's the alternative. The alternative is that it's not uncommon sometimes for local governments to fund a. Off-system project. So what I mean by off-system, it's not on a state highway, it's not on a federal highway. It's a local funded project, it's a local roads. And so at some point in the future, we do the engineering, the PE work, that fight task one. Uh, and let's say we don't get federal funding in this project, which is pretty slim, but let's say we don't. Then. Then it becomes a locally funded city project in the future with any future Splosh monies that may come our way. Okay, and then the design phase, the rest of the design phases, the cost will be less than four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Which is why we're not releasing the design firm to do all the work. Because it's possible that if we don't get federal funds, then the design effort is a lot less severe. It's a lot less costly and that dollar lump comes down on the four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So we're being released on the PE, we submit to Atlanta Regional Commission, every, every government does this. And then we'll know in eighteen months, to two years, in that, in that period of time.
So, does that mean that, um, once this job with this part is done, including the. Concept and, and, um, and the, the following the design and all that. Once that is done, the only thing will be left is bid it and construct it?
Yes, yeah, four to five years from now.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Bill and then Councilwoman Hood. I think she's frozen. So we'll go to Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, me again. Um. So. I didn't quite follow all of the questions that Vice Mayor had, but. The two hundred and eight thousand dollars and change, it's really about two hundred and nine. Um. Where will the money come from when we write the check to them?
So, so Dan, uh, we have had a number of discussions with Dan about remaining Splosh monies. So this was always on the Splosh program, the very first spot, the, our, our present Splosh program. This was one of the projects, uh, and it was always contemplated that the city would fund the design work. And we'd end up with some federal funding in the future on this project. So there is sufficient Splosh monies. For two hundred thousand dollars to fund the first phase of this project.
So, we would use Splosh. Would that, would that come from any other project? Would we have to unfund a project, but that's just available out there? For about two hundred thousand and then the city would, this general fund would pick up the nine thousand?
Yeah, there are no other Splosh mon- the projects left, uh, council on. This is it. This is the last, Splosh oh nine is the last project.
Okay, and, um. Are we obligated? I know we're only going to give the, the, uh, firm Volkert. The go-ahead for the concept development and pay them for that. Um, will our contract be written in a way that we are not obligated to? Have them do the rest?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. We do it all the time, absolutely.
Uh, and, uh, you know, you, you've got eighty-six thousand dollars reduced in this cost, so, well done.
Alright, there you go. Councilwoman Ha- I mean, Councilwoman Bill.
So, can y'all hear me this far?
Yes, yes, okay.
So I know initially they submitted the fee of five hundred and seventy-one thousand, right? You went back to them, negotiated, they reduced it, um, to the four hundred and eighty-four thousand, some odd dollars, right? But with that came reduction of hours, reduction of staff, reduction of engineers. What I am asking is, do you think even with just the concept phase, is that going to cause us any delays or any needed change orders in the future? Because I want to stop those change orders from happening, so frequently that we've been having. And so I just want to know from you, do you think it's going to cause, does it cause you any concern? Do you think there will be any delays, any issues with just the first phase of the concept, uh? Um, the concept phase of this project with the reduction of cost?
No, so we have, we have, whenever you ask for federal funding. The cost for design work is always double or triple what it would be if we could construct the project entirely with local funds. Councilwoman. And so there is a very regimented process for GDOT approval. Uh, of a concept phase using potential future federal funding. Um, and so, so we have laid it out quite succinctly. Uh, we got every base covered and I see no issue at all with the design cost. Now, let me add one thing, which is not in my MMO and I most probably should have. I, I thought I included it in, in the memo, but there is a fee associated with CS, with CSX, always is. Um, and that fee is right around, my guess, based upon the streetscape project. My guess for a design, for oversight by CSX, for design review, because it's on there right away, a hundred percent of the project is on there right away. Is about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, and, and that was, um, thought I addressed that in the memo. Uh, but it's, it is about sixty thousand dollars. So we will come back to you. Oh, I don't, so it must probably in a month or two, maybe three, once we get some preliminary information out of the way. For us to send to CSX, we will apply to CSX. And we will say, okay, CSX, we have a project on your right away. And they'll do like they've always done. They'll send us a forty-page agreement. And we will go through it. Stephen Quinn and I will go through it and Dan and I will go through it. Um, and we'll pick it apart, but CSX, it's CSX, and they will have their consulting firm. That does all their reviews for them for any project within their right away. And they'll lay it all out quite cleanly for us to look at. And my guess is right around sixty thousand dollars for their. Uh, review of the entire project, not just the concept phase. They'll look at the entire design phase over the next three to four years. And they'll say, here's the fee, Clarkston. We won't review these plans until you pay us this money. And that's how we did on the streetscape project, same way. So there is a CSX fee associated with this project.
Okay, and just as a, uh, let me look a little harder. If you, if, and you correct me, uh, Mr., Mr. Kaiser, but you have it already listed in there, seventy thousand now? Is that kind of what you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have, I didn't look at it in front of me, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure, because Councilwoman Bill brought up a good point with some extra costs and making sure we, we got these things covered. So I want to make sure if we already kind of have it listed, that we kind of make sure we put that number out so that people kind of are aware, seventy thousand.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, so getting back to what the city's general fund would cover. It would be of the two hundred nine thousand dollar for concept development. About nine thousand of that would come from the general fund and the sixty to seventy thousand dollars for CSX. Review would come from the general fund as well. Is that correct?
I'll let Dan address that. I, um, Dan, I don't, I don't, we haven't talked for a while or two, uh, a few weeks, so. Wouldn't this project be able to be funded with, uh, Splosh monies in its entirety?
I think all of it would be Splosh funds. It was, it's in our original project list.
Right.
And our Splosh revenues are coming in higher than we had expected for the last, basically the last year.
Okay, so, so we have more than just the two hundred thousand leftover Splosh. Okay, so you're anticipating that all of this could come out of Splosh and none of it out of the whole time?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Mr., Mr. Dan, would you, do you offhand have that number? That you can count up? Because if, if you can say, right now in the Splosh bucket, we have X amount of dollars. Can you tell us what that bucket number looks like?
Well, right now, we have about three and a half million dollars in our revenue fund, but, but we're, you know, I projected out. Till it's a six-year Splosh and we're in the year like three and a half. So I will have those numbers soon when I finish reconciling where we are through December twenty twenty-one. But I monitor it pretty closely every month and look at it.
Okay, and because we're, we're probably doing a hundred and seven, hundred and ten percent over. In terms of like the revenue, right? Or roughly?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. So I, I just wanted to bring that point up because I know it may be in a concern. Um, for some of our council members that, you know, we had this back in. And Vice Mayor Yasu, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kaiser, back two thousand seventeen, around that time, we. Actually did the initial project, so money-wise, this was something that we had the allocation for. So I just want to make sure in terms of the body that you know that this was something that we originally had outlined as an item. So for you to have any concerns about that, not to be worried about it, because this was something that was on the original list. Of projects that we had. And as you've heard from Mr. Ne- Defnal, that, um, we do have, he's monitoring those funds quite. Carefully and we're also exceeding the amounts that we'd anticipated. So with that, we'll be pretty much covered in terms of the initial development. Does that provide support and ke- care in terms of some of the concerns financially? And I, I, I appreciate you bringing up those points for the council. Does that, does that help you guys? Okay, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I, and I, I just want to, you are absolutely correct, uh, uh, that sometime in twenty seventeen. That, uh, we started with a list and that list was sent to DeKalb County. And from then, it was placed on the referendum, so we had to actually prepare all of those. Uh, with the help of Mr. Kaiser and, uh, our city, um, staff overall, and we compiled those. Uh, list of, um, projects and we had to submit it to DeKalb County. Uh, before the referendum, they do the cutoff date, and that's where, uh. It was approved thankfully and, um, so yeah, I mean, we definitely agree, I, I really, um. I really was, and the only thing I was not sure is the, the whole federal grant thing, but, um. Um, yeah, and, uh, a council member Hood is bringing a good que- question, but, um, I was just, um. Uh, like she, she's now convinced, but this is not going to come out of our general fund. Overall, it's still coming out of our funds, but. Not specifically general funds. It will be from Splosh fans, funds.
Okay, thank you for that follow-up. And with that being said, Councilwoman Bill? You are mute.
Oh, sorry, it's muted twice. Uh, so because we do have new council members on here, um, council member Hood. When, uh, Mr. Dan creates the budget, it'll show you general fund and then Splosh funds for each project that we have, and he'll have it separated out. So this is a project, so that she'll know where funds are coming out of.
Thank you. With that being said, Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone signed up?
Mr. Brian Metford?
Mr. Metford?
Yes, uh, so this project has been, uh, looked forward to for decades probably at this point. So I am all in favor of, I like breaking up this idea, breaking up the concept and the project. Um, because that does let us have some more flexibility. I know with, uh, construction costs. Probably not going to get much cheaper in the future, so we're going to have to adjust for that. Um, and definitely thank Larry for digging into the historical information we had. And saving us a ton of money. I know we've done a lot of research of that over the years through different councils. And, uh, so that information probably hasn't changed that much, so having it. And definitely, I'm not looking forward to the wrestling with CSX. But, uh, not shocked that it's going to take a couple of years to get it done, but stick with it. Uh, I think we've already proven that they can be reasoned with. Uh, thanks to our wonderful new bridge across two eighty-five, so, uh, I just wanted to encourage everybody to stick to it and get this signed off. And in five years, we'll have it all fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Manager, Ms. Cowie, did we have anyone else signed up for this?
Additional speakers?
No? Okay, alright, with that, we'll close this one out. Um, I just want to make sure for this one, that we get this motion right. For this one, so we'll keep this on a regular agenda. So, next one, new business. Item A, discussion of alcohol license for GoPuff DBA GB License LLC located at. Eight O A Park North Boulevard, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. Ms. Cowie?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the new owners of the GoPuff Retail and Delivery Shop located at eight zero eight North. At eight zero eight Park North Boulevard has made application for an alcohol license for beer, wine, and malt beverages. To deliver. All required inspections have been performed, that the required background check has passed. And the city's co-compliance officer has reviewed the application and has measured the location and found. It does meet minimum distances as defined by the code. Per section three dash five eight, new licenses are permitted to certain designated businesses, including a retail delivery shop. The A R C, the Alcohol Review Committee, performed a thorough review of the various components of this application. And Madam Mayor, under our section three dash five three, the city council is vested with the final authority to grant an alcohol license. And Mayor, the applicant, or Ms. Mindy Thompson is here that represents the, um, applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Thank you for being on board. Uh, Vice Mayor Yasu?
Um, so first I want to ask a, a question to our city manager. Um, considering the fact that, uh, I think it was in twenty seventeen or so that. We have had, um, um, this, we decided that we're not going to have any more. Uh, locations for packaged, um, uh, alcohol and beer and wine, uh. Um, places, but, um, I guess we pretty much opened this again. Uh, last year and I was in a minority, so, oh, well, it is what it is, that we have a democratic system. But I want to ask a question to our city manager, um, has there been any other inquiry or any application for, uh. Delivery, um, style, um, uh, liquor stores? I don't know what to call them.
No, um, Vice Mayor Iyasu, there have not been additional inquiries. And just like you did say before, um, the zoning, um, ordinance was amended to include retail delivery shops. Actually by the GoPuff team.
Right, and, uh, my second question to, uh, the, uh, organization is, um. What is their hour, service hours? Because I know that they actually, uh, deliver. Uh, so I'm not sure, what is their service hours?
So, the hours of, of delivery for alcohol will have to mirror the permissible hours. Within the City of Clarkston's alcohol code for a package alcohol sales. So that would only be Monday through Saturday, nine AM to midnight, and then Sunday, twelve thirty PM to eleven thirty PM.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? About this item? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Councilwoman Carroll, did you have a question?
I mean, is there any reason to not put this on the consent agenda? Seems like it's pretty straightforward.
Uh, I do not agree, I mean, but, um, I'm not opposed, but I just don't agree with.
Well, what else is there to discuss? I mean, you, you can vote against it if you want to, but, I mean, we need to discuss it more.
So if that happens, that means it's not consent agenda, that's what I mean.
Right, so it's okay. You know, we, that's why we have our representation out here. So if somebody doesn't agree, we can put something on consent, we can put something not on the consent agenda, have a regular vote. And I think we can go move forward. But thank you, Councilwoman Carroll, for bringing that as an option. We appreciate that, okay? Any other questions by the council? Alright, hearing none. Um, Ms., Ms. Cowie, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, we have, um, Amy Metford.
Mrs. Metford?
It's the Metford duo. Um.
Alright.
Yes, I think this is great. I think it's a great opportunity for GoPuff and. I think it's a great opportunity for GoPuff and for other businesses in the city. And I really do appreciate GoPuff bringing this up and sort of putting our city on a progressive change with this and hoping, you know, new things, new days, new business opportunities. And I appreciate GoPuff for getting us to this point. And I think it's a good thing to do is to give them the alcohol license. They will adhere to the city's rules and regulations around that, which I greatly appreciate. But, you know, Owet, you brought up a really good point about the hours of alcohol sales for package and liquor. But this isn't package and liquor, this is the beer and wine stuff. But you did bring up a really good point. Are our convenience stores actually following all of these rules? Because I find it pretty amazing that GoPuff will, if we don't even have our own convenience stores that are following these rules. So that's a good point, and we should definitely check on that and make sure it happens. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Metford. And any other county, any other community?
It's Mr. Brian Metford.
And then tag team, you're it, Mr. Metford.
So I have a little different take on this. So I support the GoPuff delivery and actually I support the alcohol delivery in general. I've almost been killed by two drunk drivers on two separate occasions. Spent time in the hospital, reconstructed my leg, had to learn how to walk again. So anything that allows people to not reach a point where they should not be driving and then decide they need to get more booze, if they can call and have it delivered and stay off the road, I'm for that. It's not going to stop them from drinking at home, but this would potentially keep people off the road. So that's the way, that's how I see this as a possible benefit to the public. It just keeps the people who are already making bad choices from making another one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Metford. And Ms. Calwee, did we have anyone else? Okay, with that being said, this will be a regular agenda item. And we will move on to item B, which is the discussion of SPOSS zero four B and C Pedestrian Enhancement, Trailhead and Roland Street, Mel Avenue Traffic Calming Project, Change Order for Chicanes Removals and Speed Table Installation. So we're not going to have the crooked street of Clarkston anymore. Is that what we're gonna, okay, good. Ms. Calwee?
We're going to discuss it, Madam Mayor. There was a meeting held in November of two thousand twenty-one with the residents that were concerned about the installation of the chicanes on Rogers Street. Currently, residents are unclear of why Rogers Street was the chosen location for the chicanes and the method of traffic calming without their input. Currently, there are six chicanes that have been approved for installation. Four chicanes have not been installed as of today, with two, four chicanes, I'm sorry, have been installed with two pending, based on our discussion. And according to the residents, the chicanes are damaging cars. They're having limited access to their driveways. And cars are not currently stopping on the Hill Street and Rogers Street stop sign locations. And also residents are concerned about the depreciating property values due to the chicane installation and emergency vehicles on Rogers Street. So we did discuss this with them, and I feel that this is probably an item that can have further discussion with those residents, based on your recommendation, Mayor and Council, to the Public Safety and Legal Committee for additional review and a recommendation.
Okay. And is this something that would need to go to Public Safety and what's the other committee that we have with? Is it Environment and Infrastructure?
My thought would be Transportation and Environment, because that's one committee and it affects both aspects of that. I'm not sure why it would go to Public Safety and Legal at all, to be honest with you.
Because it's public safety. Traffic calming.
Well, it could be a joint meeting. It can be a combination of Public Safety and Environment and Transportation. So we can work together. So, let's, okay, so let's, let's look at that. And Council, did we have any other comments or wanted to talk about this? All right, hearing none. It sounds like we will have this go to a joint committee meeting between the Public Safety and Legal and then the Environment and Transportation. Sounds good. If that's the case. Consent agenda, has something we can do with consent? Yes? All right, thank you. We're moving along, so item B, Consent Agenda. So we're going to move to item C, which is a discussion to amend.
Did you want the public comment?
Oh, let's have the public, because I know the public wants some, want to have some comments about this. And so you know what, sometimes we got a right or wrong. And I know, I know, I know. Sometimes we gotta admit. Okay, so, do we have a public comment? We got Mr. Metford. Mr. Metford, come on, let's hear from you.
So I will miss buzzing down through Rogers Street on my bicycle like I'm skiing, because it's kind of fun if you get a good run at it. So, but it, we learned from this, we learned. That's what we're doing. You know, there was a need for something to be done on Rogers Street. We need to do something different, something bold. Entertaining people to watch people try to speed through there and make it or not. But, you know, we'll try something next, and there we go, you roll with it and move on. There you go.
Thank you, thank you. And to your point, we can admit when something doesn't fit, okay? But we learn from it, and then we do what's in the best interest of the community. So we'll take it. Duly noted. So thank you all. Any other comments? Okay, no other comments, and we have this one as a consent. So we'll go to item C, which is the discussion to amend the city code to allow service stations and convenience stores to operate twenty-four hours per day with the installation of video surveillance equipment. And this is Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, Mayor Burks. So I worked on this ordinance with the city attorney, as well as Public Safety, assisted to ensure certain provisions were added, and there were no general concerns. However, I did, we did have a committee meeting last night, so there were some concerns brought up, and I'll mention those briefly. Currently, right now, in our ordinance, section nine point five dash fifty-five, the hours of operation are that no service station should operate between the hours of twelve midnight and six AM. And currently, there is a, so the rationale for this whole item is because we have a pedestrian-friendly community, where individuals don't have access to cars to get to large stores to get essential needs for their families, so they're utilizing the convenience store and gas stations. Constituents in our community also work non-traditional working hours, outside of that nine to five. So these type of stores provide access to essential resources and goods as individuals are traveling from work and despite, despite the hour of the day. Constituents also rely on convenience stores for essentials like milk, bread, snacks, personal hygiene products, cleaning products that are essential for their everyday lives. Currently now, as I mentioned before, gas stations, service stations are required by our ordinance to close at midnight until we open at six AM, which reduces ultimate access. I've talked to all of the gas station owners, either in person or via phone, as well as convenience stores via phone. Ultimately, gas stations and convenience stores provide goods and services to our community, especially with inflation of gas prices and just financial hardship. So I would like the council to consider this item that I'm bringing before you today of changing the hours of operation to twenty-four hours for any owner that complies with purchasing the man and maintaining the video surveillance systems and cooperating with public safety when they being necessary to review video footage. The overall intent is to protect the public health, well-being, and safety of residents, visitors, employees of the convenience stores by enacting and updating the regulations. From last night's committee meeting, it's clear that we have some code and compliance concerns. But those need to be figured out internally, of course, with the City Manager and our respective departments. This item solely is to extend the hours to provide services to the community, increase the safety measures for individuals or patrons that utilize these convenience and gas stations in Clarkston that are in compliance with this ordinance, if we proceed to move forward. I've spoken to Public Safety about this measure, and they have advised that there are no concerns with the actual ordinance as it's spending the hours, and they have a good working relationship with the owners. And in the past instances, when they needed to review the footage, the owners were compliant. Now I know that some of the concerns are around solely the compliance and enforcement, and that's internal. But I'll leave it there, and I will let Jamie chime in, Councilmember Carol, as well as the City Attorney. And I also ask for any, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. All right, Councilman Carol? Councilman Carol, you there? Well, we know he's there, and we'll let him come back when he's ready, okay? Oh, you ready? All right, thank you, Councilman Carol.
I didn't have anything to add, but I was there, sorry to step away for a second.
I wasn't clear on your comment, what was your comment?
She doesn't have anything.
Okay. And then, Mr. Quinn, you wanted Mr. Quinn to chime in, and then we'll have Councilwoman Hopkins.
Well, I mean, I think Councilmember Bell described the ordinance pretty well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and Councilwoman Hopkins, and then Councilwoman Hood.
I would just like to say that my primary concern with this would be the noise generated by twenty-four hour gas stations. We all know that at two in the morning, most people stopping are coming home from bars. Now, there are people that work oft hours and shift work. But I have a few people that work shift work at the chicken plants, like on our street. And I know they're picked up at seven in the evening and dropped off at seven in the morning. If they're coming home in the middle of the night, people are often intoxicated. They often have their radios loud. And most of our little shops like that are adjacent to or part of a residential community. So that would be, to me, the drawbacks would be more than the benefit of this. Similar to the keeping bars open till four in the morning, I thought it might be a benefit to those who are working in healthcare. Just want to come home for a quiet drink, but that's just not the way it turned out in the end of the day. And although I did support that when it was initially introduced, I wasn't on the council, but I agreed with it. Having seen the results, I found it to be detrimental to the community, and I think this would be on similar lines. That's all.
Okay, thank you, and Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, thank you. I had a question on the convenience store definition, and it's the last sentence. This definition includes any small retail store located on the same parcel or operated in conjunction with an automotive service station or gas station. Can you explain what that means?
That would be, you know, sometimes if you go to the gas station, they will have a subtenant. And, you know, some stereotypical things they might be doing there would be selling cell phones or hair braiding. And so it would apply to the subtenant as well.
Okay. And do we have our restrictions on those kinds of businesses? Is this kind of existing?
There's no restriction like that currently that I'm aware of. The definition of the, that you referenced, Ms. Hood, was borrowed from DeKalb County, who recently adopted a similar ordinance. So, but yeah, by all means, we could take that part out of the definition. And that would mean that, you know, they wouldn't be a part of this. It would mean that they're already not a service station, so they could stay open without doing the cameras under the current state of the law.
I also noticed an increase in floor area from two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet. But did we, was there a particular reason why we increased that square footage?
Increased from, from what?
Two thousand. I think the current code said two thousand or something. I seem to read.
Perhaps in a different section, I didn't reference that. I think the twenty-five hundred may have come from DeKalb, but I can't recall specifically where I got that number.
Okay, it's not, not that important. I have severe reservations about this. I could see extending operating hours for one hour. Fact of the matter is, many kinds of places like this, not all, have problems relative to loitering. And most of them have coin-operated amusement machines, which my understanding is we cannot regulate. And I, I just cannot support sort of a redo of a situation where we extended hours before, and it did not work. To me, having the video camera, first of all, how many times have we seen on the news, video camera of views of crimes taking place? So I don't know that having a video camera in there is going to stop things from happening. It might give us a leg up on finding the perpetrators. But, you know, this is not, I don't think that this is something that is beneficial to the community as a whole. I just put that out there, thank you.
And thank you, and Vice Mayor Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I will start with some of the things I shared the same with, as the council members said, especially, I'm very concerned about the, the fact that, you know, the service stations and gas stations and liquor, and these places, they do sell more than milk and bread. They have, you know, COAM, that's one of the things, this coin-operated amusement machines. And we, and obviously like Councilmember Hood said, we cannot do anything about it. We cannot regulate the time or the hours. So they have been given free ride. So which means we're going to be allowing people to be playing with these machines twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And, and we can't do anything, we can't tell them, oh, you gotta turn it off at this time, because we don't have that power. So, and all these locations, they have this, and we cannot tell them, if you have COAM, you cannot extend. So I really have a bit of similar concern. So I don't know how we're going to handle the fact that we will be allowing twenty-four hours, you know, coin machine-operated gambling in the city, which is legal. And the second one is the video surveillance. I think it's good that they are agreed, would definitely add towards safety of the service stations. However, this is a privacy issue, so they're not going to allow us to have live feed. This live feed is going to be for them. And if something instance happens, that's when our police will ask them to have access to the, to the video. But that is not going to stop like Councilmember Hood said, anything. So having a video does not give access to our police department to watch. So having a video um does not give access to our police department to watch every every action twenty-four hours and we don't have the personnel to be watching a video twenty-four hours. So I am definitely support there some of this idea like, you know, making the video surveillance uh mandatory for all this convenience stores and uh and liquor stores and all these places uh where there could be any uh, you know, crime happening. But um, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna have twenty-four hours access to the feed, live feed of it. And even if we do, I don't see how we could use it and I don't think we have mana power to to sit down and watch every single convenience store and gas station twenty-four hours by our police department, uh especially nighttime. My other question is, um, how many, how many are actually asking for this? I mean, are we uh talking about one or two? So if this is just one or two places, I probably personally might wanna consider um, if there are any neighbors we could contact and ask them if it's okay, we could do it. But I would have a problem with allowing everybody because we're gonna get into problems in the future in the in the in the in the in the long term. So instead of that, we could say um with consent of neighbors or something like that maybe added to. I'm not really sure at this point what we could do to reduce this thing, but I think if the neighbors was in the immediate vicinity agrees um that they're okay with having this place open, we might have to do more um engagement with the community. So if everybody's okay with it, then we could go for for forward this. Um, uh, I definitely see this, it could be good for uh this some gas stations or some service stations. It could also help some residents who who work odd hours like Councilmember Bell said. However, we're gonna have to be careful because we're gonna allow bracketally or uh we should have clear conditions to how we're gonna do it. Um. But I'm honestly not against it and because the 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 funny part is it's already happening. I know there are gas stations, I'm not gonna say names or locations, that are actually operating pretty much twenty-four hours within the city limit right now as we speak. So I I really, I'm not sure um um, why even they need even our approval because it's already happening. Um, maybe this maybe this is something our police department have to look at, but um I am pretty sure this is already happening. So I I'm not really sure why we even have to care about if this has already happened, so we shouldn't do something about it. Uh, um, and the other last thing on our list is um um, pre- pretty much since alcohol is not sold after midnight, I really am not sure what demand these businesses have to operate. I honestly, um, this is a long time ago, but I did work at gas stations um when I was new to the country. And a gas station operator is not gonna have a business open twenty-four hours if he doesn't know he's gonna pay for his worker, he's gonna pay for his life, he he's gonna pay for everything. And they don't make money on gas. They don't make money on uh milk and bread. They make more money on uh other things such as alcohol and alcohol is not allowed after that time. So I really am not sure where this is coming from because they're not gonna be able to sell alcohol. How are they gonna, this is not financially feasible to them unless they wanna, you know, they're thinking about other things such as coin-operated machines or some other things that are probably not allowed. Um, but I mean, I don't wanna put allegations. I don't, I'm not saying this is happening. But I I'm just saying we definitely have to be uh, really, we gotta walk tippy walk, tippy toe walk on this. Um. But I honestly, I'm totally fine with having the gas stations operate twenty-four hours. As long as the neighbors are okay with this, as long as, because if we put this in and the neighbors come and say, oh, we don't want this to happen, we will not have any way of telling individual gas stations that they can't do it. And we cannot discriminate on who to allow to. So we're gonna have to have clear uh conditions such as making sure the neighbors are okay with it. So if the neighbors are okay with any, I mean, uh, we and we can put the limit of how far the neighbor is considered to be uh i- impacted by something. So um, yeah, all these things needs to be really discussed and hammered out. But I honestly, I'm I'm a libertarian when it comes to these things. I believe that this is good for business, but we cannot do it without consulting with our with our residents. That's all my thing on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mary Yasu. And uh I know that Councilwoman Johnson initially had her hand up. Did you still wanna speak at this time? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I basically wanted to basically reiterate what I said last night. First of all, we have to mandate what we have instead of changing. Um, whatever that process looks like internally, externally, because it's a two-sided coin. When the, when the owner actually signed a contract saying they wanted a convenience store, they were aware of the hours and it's not being maintained right now. And we also have um the issue of c- code, whatever that looks like after five-thirty. So I think we need to fix the current problem instead of create another one. We've had some convenience store issues that yes, the cameras did play a very good part in those incidents. Um, but I don't think this is a good idea for our community. Um, and another thing, um, the surveillance cameras are a very good idea. Regardless of what time they close, that's still a good idea and maybe we could offer an incentive to assist them in purchasing even, but the hour thing, I I just don't see it benefiting the community at all. So, um, but one of the things we definitely need to look at is our code. And because we all live in this small city and lights shine way past midnight at convenience stores in Clarkston. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Hopkins.
I wanted to point out that um if you have a situation where people keep falling off a cliff, you you have the option of putting a fence at the top or an ambulance at the bottom. Um, a fully staffed ambulance at the bottom is a lot more expensive and I think using the video cameras is an ambulance at the bottom because it will help you catch a perpetrator after a crime has been committed. It does not prevent crime and in the idea of harm reduction, I think we need to think about prevention rather than uh can we punish the person who did this? And I also think Councilmember Ayasu answered his own question of how would they make money if alcohol sales aren't allowed when he said they're already ignoring the ordinance on the hours of operation for a convenience store or a gas station? So why would they pick a particular ordinance to follow and be ignoring the other ones? So I think if they're fairly comfortable ignoring the hours that they signed a contract to operate under, then they would be equally comfortable on ignoring the hours of the alcohol. Um, it doesn't make sense to me to credit them with um having very high legal standards in one ordinance and not on the other. So I think that is uh, we just have to assume that if they're already violating and we don't need to reward them by allowing them to expand their business twenty-four hours. I think it is just creating an attractive nuisance to draw people in that should probably, in most cases, just go home and go to bed. And also in looking at the experiment we did with allowing um, the bars to stay, oh, well, not restaurants to serve alcohol till four in the, to serve till four in the morning. Um, what we heard repeatedly from people at Pont Sports Lounge was that noise is not coming from our bar. It is people stopping at the Texaco. So, you know, people pulling up in their cars with music blaring, opening the doors and that's what they're hearing. They're not hearing music from our bar. So it does bring a lot of noise to a community. That's all my comments.
Okay, um, and Councilwoman Bell, do you wanna take this time to uh speak again or um?
So, so what I wanna do is, you know, let anybody from the public speak if they have any comments. I don't have anything to say. I'm taking down notes. I'm gonna go back to the drawing board um and make some edits to it and re-present itself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Vice Mary Yasu and then we'll take public comments.
And this this question is to um, if Councilmember Bell can answer it, that'll be great. If not, I wanna ask uh Mr. Quinn. So uh right now, uh when we say o- operating hours, if I'm not mistaken, they can still have their um their gas pumps on and uh they could still, people can still come and fill up their gas tanks uh using credit card, obviously. Um, so am I correct on that? So there is no restriction on that, that their gas station could uh could uh continue selling uh gas specifically even any twenty-four hours?
Um. To my knowledge, if they're close, well, well, Attorney Quinn, you can answer it. I mean, to me, that is transacting business just um not in person. Um, I don't, I hadn't thought of that question, Mr. Vice Mayor, so I I don't have a uh a a great answer for you. I'd like to look at that if you don't mind.
Okay. My experience is that most gas stations turn off the pumps when they close because if they don't have duty, there's danger that someone could accidentally leave the gas overflowing and cause a severe accident. So every gas station I've ever been to has turned off the pumps when there's not attendant duty and they close just for safety purposes.
Except in Texas.
Couldn't be surprised if a state regulation requires a human on duty.
Mm-hmm, yeah, except in Texas where they have self-serving gas stations, so.
Yeah, is it okay with the council if uh Mr. Quinn can look at this because I think this is probably something that we probably, if we'd never thought of, we could allow them if it's allowed by the state or if it doesn't, I mean, uh, or if it's not, maybe we can make sure it's being followed.
Okay, all right. So you got some homework, Mr. Quinn. And any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Open it up to the public. And Ms. Calwee, who do we have signed up?
We have Amy Metford.
Okay, Mrs. Metford.
Um, yeah, it's the Metford duo again. I think we both signed up for this one.
Okay, great.
There are a lot of things that concern me and a lot of those were brought up. Um. Susan and Laura and Deborah really brought up a lot of great points in that it is something that's very concerning. If whatever business is in that gas station can also be open twenty-four hours, that's sort of a very concerning potential of what could be offered in those businesses and what would they be offering twenty-four hours a day? We're not doing a good job of enforcing what we've got now, so opening it up, I think, just encourages sort of abuse of the goodwill and good nature behind this ordinance, much like the late-night ordinance, which had a really great start and motivation behind it, was very quickly abused because we just didn't have the means to police every business every night for the entirety. And I think that's the problem. If you can't have a business that's going to follow the spirit of the law versus the letter when forced, that's that's a problem. And so I think really taking a strong look at how this is going to be enforced and, you know, sort of getting your house in order before you expand kind of thing is my biggest concern for that.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Metford.
Uh, yeah, so I think there are some good points in this and I think there are some carrots here. Um, I like the idea of the the cameras. I think there's some opportunities, though. I think we should capture the outside of the area, especially the parking lot areas. That might should be considered because I think all these places already have camera systems for their own protection. But I think they need to capture also the parking lots as an addition. Uh, I do have a big concern about those sub tenants. Uh, I'm pretty sure the gas station on Montreal has a has a couple of empty spots in it as for the last few years. Um, if they could open and run something twenty-four seven by slipping into this, I, it will happen. So I think we have to look at, I hate to say it, but how will this be abused? Really, it was yet to ask. Um, I really didn't know that we had a limitation on gas stations being open because every time I drive by one regardless of the time, it's open. So this is news to me that we even had the law. Um, and yeah, it will be, it will be abused. And so, and you're right, even if it's, they're gonna make their money somehow and the they'll sell past the the time limit anyway. Um, if it's gonna be coin-operated machines, if you're gonna ask them to put cameras in, put cameras in in front of the coin-operated machines and along with the the cashier area to make sure they're not being operated as a casino. That way we can track what's going on while the coin-operated machines, if we wanna go down that a- area. But yeah, to agree with what was already said, the loitering, the Texaco parking lot, which was always said to be the 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 source of things, yeah, there's people over there hanging out. Um, Texaco never has a problem running them, won't run them off. But now you're talking about another enforcement issue. So um the idea, I think, of just trying to make, I think the idea really is to encourage the gas stations to be more secure. I like that idea. That is a workable idea. Um, and we should be able to find some ways to encourage them to do that. And I think part of it would be the external cameras um to capture more of the lot itself. Um, but the hours and the the liberal use of the hours, I think, may be the wrong carrot. So I I think this just needs to go back and just get a bit more work done to it. Um, getting input from the local uh residents is ideal. Yes, we should do that when we're looking at changing things like this. Because it does impact them as we learned from the Pont Sports Lounge situation. So let's learn from what we had before, change some things around. And if we have to, I like the idea of putting a time limit on if we do change this. Let's say if this gets voted in, it has a one-year expiration date where we can revisit it and the council could then put it back up and put it in again. So if it does fall apart, we have an out. So it's just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Calwee, did we have anyone else signed up?
I don't see any additional speakers, Madam Mayor, but if I'm, please raise your hand.
And I think we had somebody from the committee meeting last night. Um, is that correct, Ms. Councilwoman Bell? Did we have someone else? Did you have someone else?
Yeah, one of the owners is on, but he looks like he he walked away. We'll just keep going.
Okay, I I I remember he was on the call last night, so I just wanted to make sure I extended that to him if he hadn't had a chance to sign in. Okay, um, I think he stepped away and I'm gonna talk two more times, let it flow. Thank you for all of the comments. And also, I'm I'm glad that we had an opportunity to bring up the part about the other retail businesses. That's something that we probably didn't even recognize as part of that code. So that's a good thing in terms of that exposure. And yes, Mr. Shaw, you there? You wanna have a comment? Would you like to talk? Cause you're on mute if you do. You still on mute?
Whether you guys decided, I'm happy with it. Whether you guys decided, I'm 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 happy with it.
All right, well, thank you. And we appreciate you for coming out. And I know you stayed on the agenda for a while, so thank you for your input.
No, I just meant to, to lock the door because my daughter was sleeping this way.
Okay, all right, well. No problem. That's why I kinda waited a little wi- little while to give you a chance to speak. Okay? All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, you take care. Okay, with that being said, I I think we had a very robust discussion and I appreciate that. And uh, I know Ms. uh Councilwoman Bell was writing uh tons of notes over there, so I'm grateful for uh her bringing that up and following through with that. So council and ca- and community, thank you for your input on this item. With that being said, we'll close this out and we will and and Councilwoman Bell, did you want to, did you, as far as the And, and, and Councilwoman Bell, did you want to, did, as far as the agenda for next week? Did you want to keep this on the agenda? Uh, what did you want to do?
No, you can pick up the agenda, table it for April. Uh, I have edits to be brought back for y'all. Bye to you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we, so uh Ms. Cal Wigg, you have an update as far as what's on the agenda for next week, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. So we'll move on to D, which is discussion of change order number forty-two for SLOX zero four. B and C Roland Street Road Diet Project Local Maintenance Improvement Grant Paving Project. Ms. Cal Wigg.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, this is the uh for the fiscal year of twenty eighteen and nineteen. From nineteen to twenty, and for twenty to twenty-one, the L-MIC applications included various improvements within the SLOX. Oh, four, B and C Roland Street Road Diet Project. Um, the December twenty twenty-one L-MIC application included various roads for resurfacing. Clarkson Industrial Boulevard, Vaughn Street, from Montreal Road to where Dead End. Um, Rogers Street, Market Street, from Rogers Street to Roland, and Carroll Park Drive. Carroll Park Drive resurfacing was previously included in the SLOX oh eight contract at seventy-five thousand dollars. The Rogers Street milling and resurfacing is included in the SLOX oh four B and C Road Diet Contract at one. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, the total L-MIC collected for the three years is two hundred and seventy-six thousand plus. Georgia Department of Transportation does require thirty percent match from the local government. And the minimum required project cost will be three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents. The total cost of all five paving and resurfacing projects is in excess of thirty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, Mr. Larry Kaiser is here to answer any additional questions or concerns that you may have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Cal Wigg. Council, um, or, Mr. Kaiser, did you have anything you would like to add?
Ama'am.
Thank you. Council, did you have any other comments at this time or questions? None? Okay. Is, is, is this something that we can put on consent agenda? Are we, are we good with this one? Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
Um, I am not exactly sure if this includes the um, is this change order includes the um. Then the Roland Street that we made one way, um. Is this, is this, does it include this?
No, that, that was a change order from a while back, Councilman. It has, it has nothing to do with this.
Okay, so has that been resolved, sir? Are we talking about that? Because I did hear from a, a business owner. That he was not very happy about um. The, the direction. He was, he was okay with making it one way, but he was not happy about the direction it being uh from. Uh, east to west.
Vice Mary Yasu, before we move too far into that, that's not one of, that's not this particular agenda item. So I know if you want to have additional comments about that, I want to make sure we stay on this agenda item, because I don't want other people adding. To other agenda items. So we gotta stay on this one. But bring up your concern later on as far as the right away, okay? Okay. Got it. Okay, so um, did you have any other questions as it relates to this particular agenda item? Vice Mayor, I want, I want to make sure, did you have any other questions as it relates to this agenda item?
No, ma'am.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Would the segment of Rogers Street between um Market Street and Indian Creek? Where we were just discussing doing that, going to committee, is that a part of this agenda item?
Yes, it is.
And would what the committee members decide on how to handle that and whatever? If they're gonna reach out to the neighbors, I assume they are, would that affect potentially the dollar amount? Should that? Be taken out of this since that, what happens with that is still sort of in play?
So it doesn't matter whether the chicanes stay in place or they're removed. The road will still be milled and resurfaced regardless. The only difference is the cost. So when we delay Rogers Street, which is all part of SLOX oh four from day one. Um, if we delay the resurfacing of Rogers with this whole package of resurfacing projects, uh looking at here. Um, then there's gonna be additional cost down the line, two, three, four months from now. Uh, to resurface and mill Rogers Street. Whenever the decision comes about whether chicanes stay in or they come out. Um, if you go beyond uh this timeframe of this, all this resurfacing work that we're talking about here. Then the council should expect to see an increased cost for asphalt. Two, three, four months from now, when decision is made about the chicanes.
Okay, I, I apologize. I did not follow that at all. Is, is it an all or nothing deal? Do all five of these streets have to be sort of approved at the next meeting or?
No, you can, you can just exclude Rogers for now and then do Rogers whenever you get to it in the next couple of months.
Okay, that was my question. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, um, I, I'm having trouble figuring out what we're actually paying for. Am I correct that the Carroll Park Drive resurfacing has already been funded through? The SLOX oh eight?
Yes, so here's how. We have all these, we had all these projects, uh, Councilwoman Hood. Um, that had to be done at different times of the year, the last couple of years. And so. When GDOT audits our program for L-MIC at some point in the future, they do that every once in a while. I can show them that monies went towards Carroll Park Drive, went towards Rogers, Vaughn. Uh, and all the others I identified here and it, and so all I gotta do is prove to GDOT that monies were spent. On those projects. And so when I get an invoice for SLOX oh eight and SLOX oh four, I'm gonna have the contractor. Give me, give me the tickets and the cost for, for Carroll Park Drive and Rogers Street. So that when audit comes about in a couple of years from now, I'll be able to show GDOT that those are separate projects. And not lumped in with other things in the city.
Okay, and I guess that I, I'm totally confused on this. Uh, two hundred and seventy-six thousand and change from L-MIC.
Correct.
Want to spend that, correct?
Yes.
And so where do we get to the hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars of change order?
So we have also, we had two hundred and seventy-six thousand, whatever the dollar amount is for those three fiscal years. Then we have fiscal year twenty to twenty-one for additional L-MIC funds. And so that is where Clarkson Industrial and also Vaughn Street come in, it comes into play at that point.
Yes.
So it's gonna take, so it's very difficult, Council, Councilwoman, very difficult after, after talking about this four years later. About the monies we reserved for all these projects, but they're all laid out in the GDOT applications. And it's all well-defined for the audit purposes. So all we've done is we included Rogers in SLOX oh four. And we included Carroll Park Drive as SLOX oh eight. The reason we did that. Is because we didn't know exactly when we would draw down on those L-MIC funds. So we went ahead and included those projects in those SLOX, in those SLOX programs. That's the reason we did it. Uh, it makes sense to do it all at the same time. Um, and so from council, from the council's perspective, all you need to be worried about is that when GDOT comes in. And they audit our program, they'll go from two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two. December two thousand twenty-one, and they'll see four years of L-MIC. And they'll say, where are the projects, Mr. Kaiser? And I will be able to prove to them that their monies went towards those projects.
Okay. Tell me, is the third, is the reference to the thirty percent local? From local government, is that related in any way to this change order?
No, so the thirty percent, I, yeah.
I'm done, I'm done. It's just, uh, it, it, it just. That throws me off as though we're, yeah, never mind. Thank you.
Okay, alright, Vice Mary Yasu.
Well, I, I think this is kind of a, um, a question that, that just. Uh, made me, so uh, I want to also ask kind of similar question, but um, so when we say. Uh, the Carroll Park was gonna be resurfaced, it's already passed, we approved it and it was funded. And now we are also saying we're gonna resurface Carroll Park. We're just gonna use a different source of funding, which is gonna be L-MIC. Um, so why are we lumping Carroll Park twice? It's the same project, which already been, let me finish there, which already been approved. And um, again, uh, I mean, I, I, I understand this could be different source of funding, L-MIC could be different one. But um, why are we paying twice for the same project? Is uh Carroll Park gonna be removed from the previous project that we already approved? If we approve this one or it's just gonna be um, count twice? So it's kind of confusing. I just want to know, I mean.
The reason I have all those projects there is to show City Council. That we have all those L-MIC projects funded over a period of the last three or four years. That's the only reason. And I'm trying to show council that you have met your match, the thirty percent requirement on all those projects. Maybe as an engineer, I tried to provide too much detail, but that is, that's how I deal with it. And that's how Dan, if Dan's still on the line, Dan will tell you that, that, that he knows how much L-MIC monies we have. And he's going to say the same thing. He's gonna say, Larry, be sure that, that you can prove to GDOT that those streets were resurfaced. And that's it. Dan, can you offer anything? Can you help clarify that?
The L-MIC funds are held separately in a grants fund, so they will be paid out of the L-MIC Grants Fund, yeah.
Okay. Did, did that help, Vice Mary Yasu?
No, I'm still confused because. We said we had this, we already approved it, and we don't, we didn't see a change order removing that project from the previous list. So if, if now, if we're gonna use L-MIC instead of our SLOX funding. So are we coming back again and say, okay, let's, instead of SLOX, we should use L-MIC? Is that the rationale? Is that gonna reduce the cost of the already approved? Is that what the rationale is? If that's the case, I totally like the idea. But if we're just gonna, you know, blindly support both ideas, I still have a question. I'm like, why are we approving it twice? The same project? So that's all I'm saying. But if, if you're gonna tell me that you're gonna come back and we're gonna reduce. The cost of the already approved because we can do from L-MIC, then that makes sense. But having the same project in two different proposals, I just have concerns with.
Okay. And Vice Mayor, thank you for bringing that concern. So let me just make sure, Mr. Kaiser. We got SLOX, right? We got the other L thing. Eldon. So we have a percentage of that that has to come from that and then so much from the SLOX. Is that how it works?
Carroll Park Drive is funded under SLOX.
Right.
Okay, when GDOT comes to me, whenever they come to me and Dan for an audit. All GDOT wants to show, all they will need to see is that Carroll Park Drive and Rogers Street was resurfaced.
Mm-hmm.
So when that happens, I will have all of my asphalt tickets. To prove that those two roads were resurfaced. I'll say, GDOT, these roads were resurfaced. That's it.
Okay, so, so the money. From, for those two projects are going to come from what bucket?
SLOX.
From SLOX.
Correct.
So just to make sure we're all on the same page. What you are making sure that we know is that for record purposes, you're bringing this point up. And for the point of expenditures, it will come out of SLOX.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, Councilwoman Hood.
Okay, last time. Um, I'm gonna try to get this straight. If Carroll Park Drive is being funded through SLOX. What are we doing with the L-MIC funds?
The L-MIC funds go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the L-MIC funds are being applied to those streets that I mentioned. So the L-MIC funds, and Dan, you might want to step in. How do you want to? So you, you have, we have all those L-MIC funds that are in reserve. And so the question you have, Councilwoman, is, 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 is a good question. Because we've got a hundred and forty-three thousand on Clarkson Industrial and we have it on Vaughn Street. Which is part of the L-MIC from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. We have all the previous um, L-MIC projects. Rogers Street and Carroll Park Drive. Um, uh, that would be applied to L-MIC. So Dan, would you then, would you then subtract that out of the SLOX program?
Yes, it comes out of the Grants Fund. These really, they really shouldn't include it as change orders to SLOX. They should be separate projects as L-MIC projects.
But they can't be separate because we've already got it on a contract for, under SLOX on both projects.
But as long as they bill them separately and not on those regular SLOX construction pay apps.
Right. Which is what I was, maybe I didn't explain myself, Councilwoman. So I, like, when I said I'm gonna have the asphalt tickets and so forth. Those will be retained for purposes of an audit in the future and they won't be included in the pay applications.
Okay, could we just get a list of these projects and their funding source? Is, and.
Is that something that you would like to have amended as part of this for next week?
It just is, I, I just cannot make any sense of this.
I get.
I'm hearing that we'll pass the audit, but. I'm hearing that there is a project that's already funded, yet we're gonna use other funding for it and so. Uh, following up on uh Vice Mayor's concerns, if we're, if like we're. We're freeing up some additional money. Is that the hundred and forty-three thousand that is being freed up that then we're getting the change order from? So I'm just totally on the bar.
I'll give you a list. I'll provide a list.
Alright, so I think, thank you so much. And I think for uh all of the council to have true clarity. If we can have that really broken down, because I'm, I'm looking at faces and I see frowns on the foreheads and. You know, we don't need to have that, you know, so just let's make sure we get the appropriate documentation. So that everyone's on the same page and have a very clear understanding of SLOX bucket. This other bucket. What's coming from this was coming, was being reduced, all of that. And so Vice Mayor, go ahead. And then we'll have Councilwoman Hopkins.
And I promise this is the last one. So, um. So we are talking about a project that was already funded and it's already approved. And um, I really have no idea what does that have DOT um audit have to do with this. All I'm trying to see, say, see is here, um, um. So why even have to, why do we even care about DOT at this point? We already funded this out of our SLOX funding. So why does DOT have to even add it? We already funded this out of our SPOLOX funding, so why does DOT have to even add it? A work that was done using our city funding? So I don't understand why do we have to give them receipt of a job that was done and funded by, uh, by a, a separate funding? But again, if this is going to be coming back, and so this is where I, I need clarity. If this is going to be a situation where, okay, we're going to use this receipt, we're going to show them we got, and we're going to get the money, and then we're going to use it for some other project, I'm fine, I'm happy with that. But if we're just going to show them a receipt and we're gonna, I don't even know why they have to audit this, because this is none of their business when it comes to funding that we're not even asking them. We're using SPOLOX funding. So why are we even considering giving them a, a, a receipt of the resurfacing? That's all I'm trying to say.
And, and I saw Ms. Cowie's hand kind of sideways go up. Did you want to make a comment?
I'm very much understanding what Vice Mayor Yasu is seeking in his clarity and the information of listing of the cost of each project. If it was included in a previous change order with the cost, then LMIG money, also the Carol Park resurfacing project was included on a previous application. I think it was just for informational purposes. I'm pretty sure that we won't spend that money out twice on the same project. It will go towards another project, I'm sure. Just like you were asking, in simple, in, in the simplest form. I was very much understanding what you were saying, and I'm pretty sure when we outline what the cost of the price is, we can back out from the, if it's not under LMIG, it will be under that SPOLOX change order.
Okay. So, so you, you, you have some wonderful time to work all this out for next week and make sure we have a clear delineation between how this money's going to be spent. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I took her hand down by mistake if she still had additional comments.
Councilwoman Hopkins, did you have something?
I just wanted to say, but if, clearly, we don't have any clarity on this for next week at this point, but I was hoping that we could get Dan Dufnall to go into the financial side more, maybe next week, not tonight, when we have something to look at that's more separated, broken down and separated.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, Ms. Cowie, do we have the public? With any comments?
We're on six D. Mr. Member.
Yes.
After all that, after all that, I will just keep it short. I approve and hope we repave everything. Just pave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, with that being said, we'll close this item, and we'll have that additional information included in the packet for next week. Thank you all. So we're on item E, which is the discussion of change order number forty-four for SPOLOX zero-four BNC Roland Street Road Diet, project paving of Hill Street. Ms. Cowie.
Yes, Madam Mayor. City Council had previously approved, City Council removed the Hill Street project from the SPOLOX oh-four BNC Roland Street Road Diet in early two thousand twenty-one. The scope of the work in the bid package included resetting the granite curb, asphalt milling, resurfacing, and striping for angled parking on the east of Hill Street and the raised landscape median. Of course, we're not including the landscape median, but Hill Street requires milling and resurfacing, and that is the purpose of this change order for today, to see whether or not Mayor and City Council would like to add the Mill Street to be resurfaced and milled, well, milled first and then resurfaced.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I, I, I see some head movement. But does council have any comments at this time?
Can somebody provide contact? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand just.
Okay. That's okay. You can go ahead, Councilwoman Bell, and then we'll have Councilwoman Hood, and then we'll have Councilwoman Hopkins.
So just a quick point of clarity, because I wasn't here in two thousand twenty-one, why was the milling removed from the SPOLOX project for Hill Street?
Mr. Kaiser.
The entire Hill Street project, which was the median, the resurfacing, the striping, uh, and the, and the, and great granite curb resetting, all was removed by City Council last year. So this, I brought this back in, Councilwoman Bell. The reason I brought it in is as a precautionary measure, so that council has an opportunity to reconsider milling and resurfacing that piece of Hill Street. And the reason for that is, everything on both sides of Hill Street will be nice and pretty and resurfaced, and that portion of Hill would not be. Uh, and so instead of coming back six months from now and paying thirty percent more for an asphalt contractor to come in and do what they need to do on that section of Hill Street, I thought that council might want to reconsider paving and milling that road and put it, put it back on the agenda. So that's all this is, nothing more than that.
So that was helpful context, but can anybody tell me why it was removed initially? I, I appreciate you bringing it back on for consideration, Mr. Kaiser, due to just cost increase in general, but I'm just curious.
My recollection was, I think the money was just getting short on this SPOLOX, is what we thought at the time. But if anyone else who was in the council members differently.
Well, I thought also too, there was an issue about how we were going to do that street as well.
There's some discussion.
Because it.
Get on there. I thought we agreed to take the median and take the parking spots part off.
Right. Right.
I remember it as being a question of like gross overdevelopment. There was a lot of arguments of taking this street that's a hundred foot long and has been there for a hundred and thirty-five years with essentially without accident, and discussion of putting double yellow lines and all of the yellow lines and just gross overdevelopment that would sort of destroy the more verdant green walking neighborhood. Love it. Make it much more car oriented than pedestrian oriented.
Well, if, if we want to make it less car oriented, we should take away the parking spots and put a median on there. That would make it less car friendly. I mean, that's, I don't know if it's a goal or not. If it is the goal, we should move the parking spots and put a median on there. That would make it more pedestrian.
That, that was among other goals, but then there was, there was several considerations on that. And I'm, I'm going to wait my turn because.
Okay.
It's ahead of me.
All right, Councilwoman Hood, and I hope that helped, Councilwoman Bell.
Um, I do have a question about the parking. Residents, as you know, in the past, were in that area, were using the church parking lot for parking for visitors, et cetera. And that's not possible now with, and so it had been brought up in the past that one of their concerns about the work on Hill Street was that it was going to eliminate the parking. I know that this says that it was, it was resurfacing, strike, striping for angled parking, but I, I don't recall that that was part of it. But bottom line, will there be on-street parking available at least on one side of Hill Street when this is all done? And keep in mind that this is, this is an important access point to, to the bike trail. Because people coming into the city who might want to get on the bike trail, this would be a good access point for them, and so they're going to have to have someplace to park.
So let me answer that just from an engineering standpoint. So you can resurface that road, mill it and resurface it, and do nothing else to it. That's one option. Do nothing to it. No parking, no nothing. You can resurface it, mill it and resurface it, and put angled parking in, parallel parking, whatever you want. But if you put in angled parking on that, on one side of the street, you have to put a double yellow line down the middle of it. Because when you back out of the angled parking, what is, what do people use as a guide when they back out of parking? A center double yellow or a single double yellow or something to define where they are pulling out into? So that's the same discussion we had last year. So, I mean, I didn't bring it to your attention.
I, Mr. Kaiser, I, I thank you for being proactive, bringing this forward to do the milling and resurfacing, because it really will look odd if all the streets around it have been done, and then this thing has not been done. So I think I'm certainly in favor of this project. I just raised my hand about the parking. There you go.
All right. Thank you. And Councilwoman Hopkins.
I, I cannot help but express my disappointment in the fact that this was put on the agenda to do nothing but question and second guess the council's decision from last year. Be that as it may, it was put on here to do that, and I stand the way I did last year. I also would have to say that I disagree that you can have street parking and not have a double yellow line because there's about a couple thousand parks in America that have parking that doesn't have double yellow lines in the parking lots. There are several thousand parking lots that don't have double yellow lines down the middle of a parking lot. So I don't think the, the double yellow line is what really broke it for me. I did look up in some standards in the GOT and other, and they said that a double yellow line would be appropriate if you have six hundred cars per day, which I don't think is anywhere near that on that little street. I think we can have public parking. I don't think it needs to be striped because we've never had a problem with it before. But the more car-oriented stuff that we put, the less pedestrian-friendly it is, and the more you get color pollution and just, it, it becomes a roadway, a means to an end, and no longer a community or a neighborhood. And that's basically, I think, the problem on Rogers is not so much the chicanes, but the giant black and yellow striped signs, like eight of them right behind each other, that made it such an incredible eyesore. So I would be, I would support milling and repaving with no stripes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins, and Vice Mayor Yasu, and then Councilwoman Carol.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I also certainly have a good memory of this agenda item from last time. So I, I certainly agree with Mr. Kaiser that we have to resurface this. I mean, since we are doing all the work around it, it would not be appropriate to leave this portion unpaved. And so, yeah, I, however, maybe we could come up with a creative idea. The only sticking point of this thing that I see is the, you know, having the stripes or what color or maybe let's, let's see, Mr. Kaiser, if there are other alternatives. If there are, if not, I would be happy with just resurfacing it and leave the parking lot the way it is. And since that, that we haven't had no accidents there, I believe. So maybe just leave it the way it is. If that's what, you know, Councilmember Hopkins is concerned about, I think I, I don't see any big deal about leaving out the stripes in that portion. But I totally agree with all, just like what Councilmember Kell said, we have to resurface and try, not try, we resurface it and take care of the asphalt. But I really don't know about how we're going to solve that question of striding, so.
Okay. And we'll let Mr. Kaiser speak, and then Councilman Carol.
The, the only reason this came, again, back to City Council, is my attempt to be as proactive as possible so that six months from now, we wouldn't be resurfacing that road and paying more money for it. So when I bring it back to council, I'm obligated to present council with both sides of the issue, and that's what I've done. Now, Councilman, you can, you can, there is an alternative solution. Alternative solution is parallel parking. That's it. One side of the road, parallel parking.
Okay. So that's, that's an option. Wait. Councilman, Councilwoman Hopkins, wait. I'm going to let Councilman Carol keep your thought, and then we'll follow up with you. I want to make sure. So with that, Councilman Carol, and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
And Mr. Kaiser, still, one of my suggestions was just make it parallel parking, which would remove the need for the double yellow lines. And there would still be some parking spots to neighbors, plus the neighbors who have a giant parking lot next to them where they could have more parking if it was really needed. So I don't think it would, you know, take away all the neighbors' parking options if we did that. The other thing is, I think that that would create more space for pedestrians, if that's our concern. You know, we could even think about bringing the median back, and that would create another space for pedestrians or across walk, which would create more space for pedestrians. So there are ways, I think, to reduce parking and also make it more pedestrian-friendly space, which I think we want it to be, since it's right next to the path that we're spending all this money on redeveloping for pedestrians. So I think if we want to make it less car-friendly, I think reducing the parking spaces may let us move the old line out and move some of those other concerns while still allowing some parking.
Okay. Now, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Being that the way it is is the way it has been, and we've never had a problem with it. I don't, the old theory, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I, I don't understand why parallel parking is the only solution when I think the best solution for parking is what it is. Cars just pull in. They have for not just decades, for scores of years. Why we would have to, and, and there's, there is, was many more issues than that. There was an equity and inclusion issue there, because we are talking about making a boulevard, spending a huge amount of money between property that is North American Mission Board and North American Mission Board, coming from property that's North American Mission Board. And we have other streets in other parts of town that are getting nothing. And I think it's ridiculous that the city filters all of their money down in an area that is served primarily for one organization, and at the same time, reducing the parking that is available to the public who are using the bike path and want to do that. Why wouldn't we reduce the parking? We've already lost the parking that was used by the whole city because the North American Mission Board has walled it off. So now that is our only parking. We have the city using the Methodist Church, but we have City Hall right there that holds court and has no parking. So no, I wouldn't eliminate, if you make it parallel parking, you lose half the parking, at least, I would think. There is no purpose to that. There is no purpose to lose half the parking. This city is sadly lacking in public parking. And we have borrowed from churches and street side or wherever we can, but that's like the only parking we have, and it has worked beautifully forever. And now we're being told the only solution is to cut it in half and make public, but why is that the only solution? Why not? What we have is more effective.
So Councilwoman Hopkins, we have, we have, we've been doing all of this construction around this area, and we have this one street that we still have to do something about, right? Whether it's just pave the street, put a line down it, have the parking boom, 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 boom. Can we all agree we got to pave the street? Can we, can we agree to pave the street?
I can pave it.
Step one. On to the next part. In the past, spin the middle of that street, was it dot, 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 or was it a solid line? What was in the middle of it?
It is a residential street.
I'm going to let Mr., I'm going to let Mr. Kaiser. I'm gonna let Mr., I'm gonna let Mr. Kaiser. We paid him a lot of money.
There was, there was nothing down the middle of that street and nor was there any striped, parallel or angled parking. People just parked wherever they wanted to, parallel angled parking. They parked wherever from, again, from, I have to tell you this because this is, I get this from lecturers all the time in my thirty-five years of working public and private sector. Why don't we just do it the way it was before? Risk. That's the reason.
Okay. So to mitigate risk, and you brought up a great point, to mitigate this risk, it doesn't need to be in the middle of that street. Do we need dot, dot, dot? Do we need a straight line? What do we need? Just to say.
Nothing. You can, you can have, you can have, so from, from a, from my perspective, understanding dilemma here, I would say that you don't, you could have any kind of, any kind of markings down the middle of that road is, as council sees fit. You could have solid, single dashed, whatever it may be. It's only to distinguish people when they back out of the car, they don't go to the opposing lane. That's the only reason.
So with that being said, council, are you okay with dashes down the middle of the lane?
No.
Okay.
It's a residential street. If we put it on there, we put it on Market Walk, put it on every residential street in Clarkson.
Okay, do, so, okay, so I hear that. All right. So we got one that says, don't want the dot, dot dots down the street. Um, do we have, we don't have it on any of the other streets, right? In terms of residential streets, do we have lines down any residential streets?
So the reason you don't is because you don't have angled or parallel parking on any residential street.
Okay, that's a very good point. Okay, so that's the difference between the two. Let's take that into account. That's the difference. So do we want to, just for that street, since we have that and it needs to be a guide for when people back out? Okay. And I got you, Councilwoman Hopkins. That's, but we got six people on this council. We need, I need to make sure we hear from the other council members too. Do you or do you not want to have the dots down the middle? Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
Um, I agree with Councilmember Hopkins. Let's resurface it without any dots or anything and leave the way the parking it is, uh, in angular, uh, position, uh, and just leave it the way it is. And that way we have more, more parking, um, because that was one of the biggest concerns. Last time I remember, there were residents who raised their concern that they do park there. And, um, so, um, I really don't see much of grave danger or risk on this that, um, that not having any line is gonna cause. So I would rather just say, just leave it the way it is, resurface it. Maybe in the future, if some other council members wanna put some lines in there, let them do it. But I, I, I agree with Councilmember Hopkins. Let's not change the nature of the, that area and let's leave it the way it is.
Okay. So with that being said, council, do you just, you, you don't want to have a line or anything in the middle? Councilman Carol.
So my preference would be first that we go to parallel parking and not have any lines. Um, and part of that reason is because I think we've created this walkable space. And so the more we can minimize parking, what make it safer for pedestrians, it can be better. The other reason is we're in the middle of a climate crisis, um, the more that we encourage parking spots, the more cars will drive, the more pollution, et cetera. So I, I would recommend less parking and make it best more pedestrian friendly. If we can't have the parallel parking, we have to have diagonal parking. And I think we do need some sort of line in the middle. And I'm agnostic as to whether that's a striped, dotted, solid. I have a strong preference.
Okay. So with that being said, how does everybody feel about the parallel parking?
And to make note, they're currently parking in a parallel position when they go downhill street naturally right now. So if you were to ride down the street, you will see that they are parallel parking.
Okay. So they're parallel parking. So council, I, I see, I see a hand. I see, I see a guest hand too. I see, I see, uh, Councilwoman Bell, um, Vice Mary Yasu, you okay with the parallel parking?
No, because that would reduce the number of cars that can park in that area. And there is no other alternative in that immediate vicinity besides the, the, the old parking lot that we used to use and, uh, which is a private property. And, uh, I still believe, uh, let's resurface it just to, and let's leave the way it's been used right now. Um, and it's, I think it's been used in an angular parking. Um, so.
Well, it's been everything. It's been angled, it's been straight, it's been parallel. It's like we've gone through multiple phases as we've gone through this whole construction period. So to, to your point and Councilwoman Hopkins' point, how many spaces would we have if we did it at an angle? And how many spaces would we have if we did it parallel?
Let me make that classic clarification, Madam Mayor, too. Um, at times you would have seen, um, parallel parking, let me make that clarification, on Hill Street at the same time with the angled parking on the other side of the street. So I just wanted to make clarification when I say angles and, um, parallel. So that's both sides. Okay, now there you go. Your vote is ready.
Okay. So, so I'm just, I, I'm just trying to make sure from a numbers perspective. Because if the concern is for the residents and, and everyone else that we provide public parking and not utilize private property, which is something that we've done before. Um, and we just want to make sure in case there's an event or whatever, there's parking on the street for the community, do we kind of have an idea of how, what we would lose if we did parallel parking versus slanted parking, diagonal parking?
Fifty percent reduction.
Hmm?
Fifty percent reduction.
Fifty percent reduction. Okay. All right. So, and I'm gonna let Councilwoman Hood answer a question or ask a question and then we'll just kind of, I'm gonna try to figure out how we're gonna work this one out.
Okay. Um, instead of trying to design by committee, um, how about if we ask Mr. Kaiser, based on the discussions that he has heard here, to do, um, a, a very simple layout of where, uh, parking perhaps on one side of the street, whether, um, showing parallel parking on that and showing diagonal. And then, uh, anything else that you think might, uh, respond to the concerns that you're hearing here. And then, um, do we want to try to discuss this at our council meeting next week? Or do we want to, uh, take this up at work session, the following work session? Because we're, we're spending a lot on something that, uh, I think is better addressed with some graphics.
Yes. And I, I concur with you, Councilwoman Hood. So, um, Mr. Kaiser, you've heard the variations that we've all expressed, the concern about the number of lots on the street or spots on the street. So can you come back with that? Keeping that in mind, council, do you, do you want to wait until, is that gonna be impact your, your, is that gonna be an impact if we wait till May?
Yes. Yes.
That, that's, so, so then we're gonna have to have this discussion next meeting. Okay. All right. Um, Vice, uh, Councilwoman Bell.
So this is what I'll say. This has been a contentious issue last year and bringing, bringing it back this year. I don't know that we should be the deciding factor for this. If we can't agree, y'all know we're gonna get pushed back from the community that we made a decision and then consult with them again on it. I don't think we should discuss this. I do understand, Mr. Kaiser, that it will be an increase, but it's gonna be a more tumultuous increase if we do something or move on something that the community does not want and you have to go back and change it again. So my suggestion and recommendation, I do not want to delay it, but it was delayed and pushed back a whole year and it seems to be because of this contentious issue of where, where the lines are gonna be or if they're gonna be lines. Um, well, we know by twenty-four, there're gonna be a ton of them as cars. So, and it's a pedestrian friendly street. I know, I don't, I, I want to know what the community wants that reside in that area. And then I will move forward with this decision. And that is my recommendation.
So, Miss Mayor, I got it. I got a temporary solution for everybody. All right. Here's a solution. We go ahead and mill it. We go ahead and resurface it. We address striping in May or June. How's that?
Boom. All right. We got a plan. Thank you. Okay. Sound like a plan. We can move on. Yes, Vice Mary Yasu, and then we're gonna have community, community.
That's awesome. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. So that was absolutely what I was thinking about. So I think we all agree there's a consensus that we're gonna need to resurface it. And I have a very good feeling the most expensive part of it is gonna be the resurfacing and the, the laying down the asphalt. So once we get that done, uh, I think if the council feels the striping and whether we decide to make it, you know, parallel parking or not, that's gonna be the minimum amount of cost. Um, I don't think it's gonna be that substantial enough. So if you can come up with, back to us, uh, Mr. Kaiser, was an estimate of the, the cost by taking out the striping. Uh, uh, I think that would be very helpful. And, uh, I, I, I have a good feeling that, uh, there's a consensus that everybody agrees that we're gonna have to, to do the resurfacing.
So next, so next, so Mayor, so next month in April, at April work session, you'll have three or four or five different striping layouts, uh, that can appease to everybody. And everybody can make a decision on those different layouts, as Council, Councilwoman Hood said.
So this is the other piece too, that, that we need to make sure is that we have whatever designs that we talk to the community and have kind of a community meeting. You know, that we, we let them know that these are the options. And however, we need to communicate in that area because we know the area where most of the people walk with, whether it's College Avenue, Rogers, all of that area, making sure that we let them know about the design options so that they see it, they make their comments. If we gotta do something where we do a scan code and they say boom, 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 and then we tell them to come to the meeting, but I want to make sure, as Councilwoman Bell's point, that we go ahead and make sure that we do that. And we can send it to committee. But what I found is even if we're sending stuff to the committee, we still need to do it by the houses because not everyone's gonna know, not everybody's gonna go to the meeting. And I do not want for them to feel like, why are you doing something else on this street? We're tired of it, right? So we need to do our due diligence for our people. That's right. Do our due diligence for our people and send that letter with the, the Q R code. Exactly. And they can just say, here it is. Check it out. If you want more information, go somewhere. But we gotta be customer friendly when it comes to this street because people are tired of all that's been happening around that area. And we have to be extremely sensitive to that. Okay? Is that, is that fair for everyone? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I see a hand raised, but, uh, Ms. Calwe, do we have anyone else signed up?
Mr. Metford.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Metford, and then we'll get you, Mr. Michael.
Yes. So first of all, um, for historical context, and if we want to return this and make it look like a residential area, as it seems to be the demand, I have the actual survey from nineteen fifty-eight of Hill Street showing a median, complete with measurements. We could chalk the whole thing out. You can see it. So that's what Hill Street looked like when there was a house still on the location owned by the Gibsons, currently used by the Baptist Church parking lot. So it was surrounded on the sides with houses with a median, just to be clear. Um, second of all, this whole discussion has made me irritated to no end and frankly, highly disappointed in how contentious it has been, how dug in certain people are about this situation. Um, the reasoning behind certain decisions, uh, highly disappointing how we're making decisions based on public need for a street based on who owns the property on either side. Because this affects everybody in the community. The reason why this was kicked out last year and is now going to be brought back, I am thankful for Larry to bring this back because since we are now repaving Rogers Street to make it look pretty, um, and we're repaving Roland Street, uh, penalizing Hill Street for petty issues is ridiculous. So I'm glad we're bringing it back. I'm glad that y'all have agreed to at least repave it. Um, I've been pushing for more pedestrian friendly things, so I appreciate that, whichever design we go with. Uh, but the funny part is, and I find this hilarious every time I drive through there, um, all the people parking currently on Hill Street are all people visiting the C I B C or NAMM. We've given them an amazing amount of free parking. Isn't that wonderful? If we put in a meeting and it'll reduce it, but if we leave it the way it is, they still have more parking spaces. Um, also those parking spaces that we supposedly lost, that the Baptists own in their own parking lot, yet we were lucky that they let us use those. So we really should be kind of thankful that they have let us use the parking lot over the years. It was never a public place. So we have our own public spaces on Hill Street to do as we choose. Um, if we can keep as many of those as possible, great. Uh, either way, anyone who chooses to park on Hill Street, unless we decide to go to a parking permit solution, anyone can park there in those spaces regardless of where they're going to visit. And that's just the way it is. Whether it's gonna be somebody visiting a party, uh, at the corner or somebody's house, you know, somebody on the Rogers Street throws a rager, maybe, um, they can park there. Or somebody going to NAMM for training can park there. It's gonna go either way. But at least for God's sake, pave the thing and get on with it. Thank you.
Ms. Calwe, thank you, Mr. Metford. Uh, Ms. Calwe, do we have anyone else signed up? All right, Mr. Michael, I see your hand up there.
Thank you.
You can unmute yourself.
I, I, I'm sorry to, uh, be poking my nose in everywhere, but this seems like a little mud puddle a little bit. I've stepped in myself in the past. Um, as Larry knows, a lot of the regulations as far as striping are ruled by the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUT CD, as it's called. And especially with you guys discussing about having to take chicanes out on another road control project, I'd sure run this past the traffic engineer just to make sure that the classification of the street allows the proper speed and the backing up of the cars in a parallel position. There, that's an honor. It's, it's a seven hundred and eighty-page, just revised manual that is only one of the regulations that concerns striping and marking traffic control devices. So again, a lot of the discussion about whether stripes or parallels, a lot of that will be precluded by the regulation that's in that manual. Uh, secondly, I applaud the idea of making it much more pedestrian friendly. You can look at Amsterdam and at the entire Netherlands, and they have pretty much become a non-car society, emphasizing fairness with the, the great job that you guys just did recently in extending the pathway to its own bridge and showing recognition to other forms of transportation besides the four-wheel, rubber-tire, gasoline hogging cars we have today. Don't forget making it pedestrian friendly and making it more friendly for bikes. And that's all I have.
Okay, you're coming closer to Clarkson. I see it. So, thank you. And with that being said, if we don't have any other comments, we will close on this. And Mr. Kaiser, you have some work for next month. So we'll move forward with just the paving of that street. So thank you all. So what we want to have, which is the discussion of change order number three for Splot Zero Eight Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Expansion Project. Ms. Calwe.
Yes, Madam Mayor. There is a disconnect between a sidewalk project that is currently underway on Market Street. Yes, Madam Mayor, there is a disconnect between a sidewalk project that is currently underway on Market Street. Um, the current change order number three is for an expansion of the scope of work on Market Street from Rogers Street to Roland. You know, as follows, as listed for the change. Um, we're coming down Market Street and then it's on the corner, again, on the corner um of um Roger Street and Roland. Um, a temporary driveway and a temporary construction eas- easement will be required from the property owner. Um, before work commences. Um, just wanted to let you know, um, Mayor and City Council that um I did individually talk. To the property owners and they are um very much aware of this um request and are in agreement with it.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, thank you. Counsel, did you have any questions on this item?
I think this is a good idea. Next, the sidewalk better.
Yes, Councilman Carol, yeah, I hear you.
I was gonna say, I think this is a good idea. It connects the sidewalk better than having to do crosswalks back and forth on Market Street. So I think. It's better to just connect it straightforward in that side.
Okay, so with that being said, are we all, yes, Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, I just uh have uh. Uh, just my opinion that in the future, uh whenever we're making a change order. I would like to see um the, the cost of the entire project. Added to it so that we know. How much is it gonna increase it or how much is it gonna decrease it so that we know? So we have a flow of information because. We cannot hardly remember how much every project is costing us every time. So it would be helpful. To see how much this is gonna add to that project or how much it's gonna reduce it. So I see the amount is gonna be adding sixty-six thousand dollars or something. But how much is the total project cost is gonna be? I would like to know in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bell, oh.
That's a good scenario. I'm Vice Mayor Yasu and I've requested that since I am. I'm new on this and I've requested the project manager, Mr. Kaiser, to make sure that I have all that information to be presented to you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Bell, then Councilwoman Hood.
I'll be brief. I think that we need an overall document of all these change orders. Actually, y'all, at, at this point, y'all know how to about change orders. Um, and I wanna know if we're gonna move forward with a consent agenda on this, but I see uh Councilmember Hood's hands up.
Yeah. Councilwoman Hood? You're on mute.
You're muted.
You're on mute.
We have a schematic of this that could be included so that we could take, just take a look at it. Just because it show, it, we're including. Two big intersections and the, and the sidewalk and that sort of thing. I think it's great project. I, I just, if there's a schematic available, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, and I was, did we have anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this one?
No, Madam Mayor, just to go back to what um Councilwoman um Hood did request and um Councilwoman Bell. I have requested to sit, um and in the progress, uh process of getting that information that you requested. From the SLOX cost from day one to every change order that we have received on every SLOX project. So um as part of the transparency process that I've come into, I have requested that information and it will be shared with each and every one of you.
All right, thank you, thank you. And I was going to ask this, but. We'll go ahead and take care of it. Who wants to make sure that this is a consent agenda item? Can I, can I get a? Thumb up, thumb up. Thumb. Everybody good? Okay. Councilwoman, okay, okay, I can see your thumb. All right, thank you. Consent agenda, okay. You have that, Ms. Calwe? Okay, all right, and so with that being said, the next item is the executive session. Yeah, I saw that. So do we need to? Hold the executive session tonight or can we? Vice Mayor Yasu?
Oh, I was gonna make the motion to go on executive session, but uh if. If it's okay to postpone it, I'm fine with it. I'm ready to sleep.
Okay, uh, do we wanna go on executive session or do we? It does, it shouldn't take us long. I'm just saying. Okay, so. Is he still on? Yeah, he's on.
Um, but I didn't call for this executive session. I mean, I'll leave it to the council to tell me. Whether we wanna proceed with it.
Okay, I didn't know who put it on. I'm gonna try to remember who put it on the agenda. Okay.
He says a personnel matter.
I think, you think it's from the old agenda?
I think it may be old. I don't remember anyone putting it on this one. I think, I know the personnel matter too. I think we can resolve it by email without having to have any meeting session.
Okay.
Well, I don't see it's imminent, so I guess we gotta move on. Just table it.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I have a motion. I motioned to adjourn the meeting. Look. Well, you said that we didn't have to have the.
No, 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 I wanna make sure you move that motion.
I moved. To end the meeting.
To adjourn, okay. It's been properly moved a second that we end this uh, uh, the adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Also say nay and then we will deal with the, what we need to by email. Is that correct with everybody? Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And we beat eleven o'clock. Thank you, Jesus. All right. Take care, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.